Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 9th meeting of the Plating Board of Northampton.
What's that? I assume Sam is coming, and I didn't hear from Krista. I know Jana is not coming.
So it's a little bit after 7:00, we apologize, but we'd like to open up a special permit hearing with site plan, residential cluster, open space for flag lot, shared driveway, and site improvements. The applicant is the City of Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability, and the site's at 254 Old Wilson Road Florence, map ID 4414. Does the applicant want to make a presentation?
Sir, Wayne Biden, City of Northampton Plating Office. So this is a joint project between the city and the property owner. So I'm going to start and sort of give you a big picture, and then Chris Chamberlain is from the Berkshire Design is going to present the details of the project. So this is the old Pine Grove Golf Course, and the city has reached an agreement to purchase about 105 acres of the golf course. And so the plan is that the property owner is going to carve off five lots, which includes the existing home. He's going to retain those, and we're going to buy the remaining land. We do this deal, if you remember, the city's goal is to make sure that we're creating some building lots, so our acquisition of open space isn't a limiting opportunity for people building in Northampton. So we've both been dealing work financially, frankly, but it also was important to us that we're getting building lots that are out there. And this deal would be two sort of medium-market lots. There's one with a house on Pine Grove and the one behind the house, and three high-end lots that are further back. So that's what we're trying to do. On this sketch before, you're going to see the black line, so the solid red or the dark red, whatever color it is, that's the land we're in the process of purchasing. We're going to talk about that in more detail. But just to give you a series of context, all that black outline to the north of that, that's the existing Rocky Hill Greenway. So we went from having no conservation land about 10 years ago to even slowly building up through a series of acquisitions, about 110 acres of land. And so that land goes all the way from the New Haven and Northampton Canal bike path up to Route 66 opposite of the jail, actually crosses Route 66 to the ice pond, and extends all the way down to this property. It's important to us also to get economic development. So when we purchase that open space, we carved out a seven-acre parcel on Route 10, and we currently have requests and proposals on the street, and the city's hoping to sell that property for some kind of economic investment. So we're trying to get open space and economic development but rationalized with this. The area in red when the golf course came on was really exciting to us because we'd like to restore this area. It's not going to be a golf course anymore from the city's standpoint. There's a stream that goes through here. The acquisition is being funded with a combination of city funds and state funds. The state was really interested because it's a resiliency project from your standpoint. We're restoring the golf course. It's going to be able to store more stormwater than it can store currently. This may be a little deeper in the lease than you need to know, but we could hear is a proposal for a cluster tonight. Two flag lots and three cluster lots. As part of a cluster, the property owner has to put a conservation restriction on a portion of, on some land to preserve his open space. So our offer for the property reflects a lower price than it would be because he's preserving some land. So we're buying 105 acres, but we're basically paying for 95 acres, and it's 10 acres that in essence is being donated in order to allow a cluster to happen. So even though I'm talking about buying the land, we're complying with the cluster section that requires some amount of land to be protected as open space. So I just want to walk you through sort of a big picture, special permit criteria, and then I'll turn it over to Chris. So I just listed the special permit criteria. I didn't do site plan, there's a lot of overlap. But we think that special permit--
Wayne, excuse me. How close does this come to the land that we permitted for the storage facility on Route 5 to Route 10?
Very close. So that, see the little red dot? The red dot is that's where that storage facility is. So their access, this is Sunnyside Daycare right here. That property permitted is right here. The additional partial the city has on the market is right here. So that's the land we carved out. If you remember in your legislative hat, you recommended not that many years ago that we rezone this property first from Business Park to General Industrial, and then General Industrial to Office Industrial. And that was all part of saying, hey, the original vision is let's do more development. It never really worked. It was too steep, too wet, too much fertile pools, but we wanted to keep that important piece there. So that land will be developed, and this will threaten that. There's a stream, and you can't really see it to scale, but you follow the red dot. I'm more or less following the stream. And that's a really ecologically important piece. So we want to preserve the stream. We want to preserve the watershed to that stream. That stream crosses Route 10 now and actually threatens the culvert. There's a lot of water goes through, it's very flashy. They wash out the culvert at some point, and then it goes down to Mass Audubon. And Mass Audubon's had a lot of erosion and sedimentation on their property. So one is the property gives us a chance to just hold some of the water back here. So right off the bat, the very first thing we're going to do is a small pond, man-made pond. We're going to lower the water level in the ponds, but leave the dam in place. So in a heavy rainstorm, the water will come, and we'll fill the pond, and we'll release the water slowly. So we, you know, we basically have a detention pond that's already made for us, thanks to the work that that field did in previous years. And then over time, you know, we will be, there are a series of catch basins and manholes in the property. So water rains down, hits the golf course, often runs across the golf course sign, sinks into the ground. But then there's a series of under drains. We'll be taking out the catch base. So this is going to make perfect sense for a golf course. But from a resiliency standpoint, we want to store water. It doesn't make sense. So we will be spending about $200,000 in that six months, taking out all the catch basins, taking out all the manholes, and storing, getting water to stay on the site for longer. So that's the reason for good resiliency areas. We're going to be planting a lot of trees. We're going to be taking out the catch basins. And so we'll be storing water for a lot longer.
So is the idea to, with the golf course, to remove the structures and then let nature take over, and it'll eventually be forest?
So a combination of things. We're going to remove immediately as a part of the project is a-- is that a pump house, the wood structure just below the dam? Is that what you used to put it?
Some of it.
Okay. So there's a structure just below the dam. We're going to remove that structure. We're going to remove the catch bases. We're doing somewhere, we are already planting trees. If you remember when you permitted the ConEd solar penis, they had to pay some tree mitigation money for cutting down trees. We're going to use some of that money to replant trees on this property. So a combination, we're planting some trees, doing some restoration, and yes, trees are going to be replaced. We got a state grant to do a, so Forest Stewardship Plan. We hired Mike Maury, and he's looking at what are the areas it's likely the trees will reseed itself, what are the things that we can do to encourage that. So it'd be a combination of things.
So the golf course is 100 and some acres, but primarily nature will just eventually make it forest?
Yes.
That's the idea.
Yes, exactly, yeah. The problem we have is, you know, mature forests in Massachusetts are mostly pretty healthy. We don't happen to have a lot of problems with invasive plants. But edges are, we have a major problem. You know, you won't see bittersweet. Bittersweet will take over and, you know, kill any forest trying to emerge. So we have to help it. It's frankly not the same thing 30 years ago, even 50 years ago. It would have restored itself faster. So we need to do little things, particularly about bittersweet and some other things as well. The 18 putter greens, for example. The sod is so dense there that we have to basically terrify it to break it up to get trees to recover. But yes, certainly the rear of the golf course, you see in this picture, it's more heavily wooded back here. This area is sort of more naturally reseeded and replanted. The larger expanses over here, less so. And then we are looking at, you know, can we use some sort of smaller culture here? You know, a five-acre field, yes, we determine, you know. So yes, it's going to, it'll be some combination of things. And we are going to be doing a master plan. So part of this, I can't, we know the first step, this $250,000 restoration we're doing this spring, but we don't know a long-term, you know, 20-year plan because we haven't done the master plan yet. So we'll be doing a master plan this spring as well. You know, one is I talked about in a second is how this meets the city's comprehensive plans and other plans. One of the city's goals right now is for us to be carbon neutral by 2050. But frankly, it's impossible for us to reduce the use of all carbon, right? People are, you know, people are still going to drive the interstate. People are still going to buy packages from Amazon. So we're looking at what are the ways that we can offset that. So planting trees here, getting trees to grow is going to sequester a lot of carbon. So we're going to reduce the city's energy footprint, but we're also going to be planting more trees and storing more carbon in trees, and more carbon in the wetlands, and more carbon in soils than actively working. So this site is all those things for us, which frankly is why the state has been so generous with grants, because they're really excited about this project. And, you know, not, I think the other thing for the state is golf courses are closing in many places in the Commonwealth. And so I think they're actually interested in this because they're looking at, you know, what happens when golf courses close. Some will, I mean, some are going to stay open, but some are going to close. And so they're, even in Western Mass, there's four within 10 miles of Northampton. I think that's the number, that are in various processes of closing. So what, you know, how do we treat these? That's one of the recent state considerations in progress. So I won't go over all the special permit criteria. What I'm going to say is basically the same for all of these things. They are all about impacts on city services, impacts on traffic, impacts on the area. And obviously, doing five building lots in an area by right would have allowed a lot more building rights, you know, homes, is going to have far less impact than use, than uses could happen by right. You know, someone could do a series of homes right along the road and have not get any permits. So we're going to have less impact than that. We're going to be building a trail for the property. You know, Gil's property has these wonderful walking trails already that the golfers use. We're going to retain most of those, and we're going to link them all the way up to the bike path. So we're going to be promoting people walking, giving people options out there. So we're going to have less impact when the development will occur. We're going to mitigate, you know, reduce stormwater runoff, save the culvert on Route 10, and do all those things. I won't go through all of it, but most of the things sit in that category. We're going to have far less impact on other things, and we think actually have a net positive impact. The special regulations, Chris Chamberlain will go over this in more detail, but, you know, the main special regulations are one of the requirements for open space residential. I very talk to the open space, I'll hand it there. Selling at bargain price, we see open space requirements, and Chris will walk through the other things. And then finally, the open space plan. You know, this, this project's consistent with the Climate Resiliency Regeneration Plan. It hasn't been adopted yet, but it's an advanced draft. The open space plan is sustainable in Northampton, all of which are about creating more open space, sequestering more carbon, but not preventing new developers. So this, because it's properties currently in Chapter 62B, which is the current taxation program, the city taxes will actually go up dramatically. So our revenue will go up a lot because we get almost no taxes right now from the golf course. We get taxes from the clubhouse itself and from the one home, but not from that golf course itself, because the taxes on 62B land are incredibly low. So that will go up, and one of the benefits of free high-end homes is, the reality is we make money in high-end homes. The school kids tend to not cost us anything.
Is this going to be, when this is done, is this going to be considered a park? I mean, if I wanted to take my kid there and I wanted GPS to get there, how, is that part of this plan?
Yes. So we call it a greenway. It's not going to be playgrounds, it's not going to be that kind of thing. But it's like, if you've been to Fitzgerald Lake, or if you've been to the lake, it's going to be like that. There will be trails. We, you said GPS, I see that we, you know, we work with people who want to do geocaches. Recreation Department is open to putting exercise trails along it. So the term the state uses is passive recreation.
So this passive recreation will have an address that you--
Yes. And it'll be on our maps and--
Yep.
All those people. Then there'll be a sign along the road. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris unless there's any questions for me.
Of course, sure.
Again, Chris Chamberlain. I'm a professional engineer with Berkshire Design Group here in Northampton. And our task on this, well, we're very excited about everything that Wayne just talked about, was more focused on the housing development piece of this and preparing the site plan for the five lots that we're building. So this is now a slightly larger-scale view of the golf course property. Again, the course essentially fills the vast majority of this lot, but the existing development is clustered around this western edge. We have the existing single-family home, which is a frontage lot on Old Wilson Road. And then there's an access driveway into the clubhouse area. 150-car parking lots here that services the clubhouse, which is located roughly here. And then that drive continues to a storage area located here. And then there's an existing cell tower where this red dot is in this location. And so with that orientation, this is now zoomed in on that area of development. And one of the things that is a nice synergy between what Wayne wants to do with this property and what we can develop is that we focus the development of the houses on that area that already has most of the development of the property, which also is the furthest distance from the existing portions of the greenway. So the connectivity between the conservation land and the existing greenway is very good. And then for the most part, the sandbox that we're playing in is already disturbed. And so there are three types of lots here, again, five overall. There is the flag lot, which is here, which on its own requires a special permit. And we comply with all of the zoning criteria for the flag lot. A maximum 300-foot flag pole, which is minimum 50 feet wide. And then the development circle that's required is shown here. We have the frontage lot, which has the existing single-family house on it. And then the cluster is three housing lots. One, two, and three that are all serviced by a single common driveway coming off of Old Wilson Road. And then on the next sheet, we see the proposed plan, which again, on that flag lot shows-- oop, lost my pointer-- shows the access drive in to the proposed building location. The existing frontage lot essentially remains unchanged. And then we take advantage of the existing access drive into the clubhouse. We're going to retain that as the first length of the common drive, which then turns and services the three housing lots. The existing pavement's in good shape, so we're going to retain that. And then we're retaining the existing grade, and then paving over the existing gravel surface as we reach these upper lots here, and then also respecting the existing cell phone lot area. And so the cluster development, again, meets the zoning requirements for frontage as well as the requirements of the driveway, with one exception that we are asking for a waiver on. The common driveway requirements have a maximum of 10% slope. We would like to take advantage of the existing access drive and not create the disturbance that would be required to flatten it out. But it does, in a short section right here where my pointer is, it's 10 to 13% for a short distance of only 100, 150 feet. Again, we'd like to retain that grade so that we don't have to grade out and disturb and cut existing trees, anything else like that. So another advantage of that is that to create these five housing lots, we only need to create one new curb cut, which is for the flag lot. The existing single-family house retains its existing driveway. And again, we're using that existing access road into the clubhouse. And then I'd also add that because this project is proposing to disturb more than an acre of land, we were required to get a stormwater permit. That was granted today with a couple of minor conditions, asking for a little bit more detail on some of the drainage structures that are to be removed, as well as some detail on dry wells that we're proposing. In general, within this development pocket, setting aside everything else on the golf course, just in this housing development pocket, we're reducing impervious coverage slightly. We're also adding some level of stormwater control to primarily for safe conveyance of the water, but also some dry wells to promote groundwater infiltration, and also looking at water quality. So overall, we feel like the stormwater of this piece of the site will be greatly improved. And then we also received comments from DPW today, which also had a couple of requests for minor additions for more detail. And then also recorded for posterity that it pointed out that this lot here is close to the maximum elevation that the city water service can provide. The maximum elevation that the water can service is 320. Portions of this lot are above that. And so the intention is to site the house so that the plumbing fixtures can be installed on city pressure. The comments note that if we can't do that, then a tank and pump may be required. But there is slope on this property. It slopes from high to low. There are portions of it that are well below that 320, so we don't anticipate a problem there. And so, you know, I, if we close before taking any questions, that, you know, we're very pleased that this project is going to add significant predicted open space while also increasing the number of homes that can be built in Northampton. On the traffic question, certainly the conversion of the golf course to five single-family homes is going to be a reduction in traffic out of this site. We're happy with the sight lines on those driveways that are entering Old Wilson Road. And then it's also exciting that this new development will be connected through the greenway to some of the alternative modes of transportation. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on this piece of the project.
Board members. So Chris, I'll ask, we didn't really have a utilities plan for this. Any details? Could you talk a little bit about the delivery of utilities to the flag lots?
Absolutely. So it would be on city water, which is available on Old Wilson Road. As I mentioned, there's a potential for an elevation restriction on that. But the flag lot would be serviced by a single water connection. And then the three cluster lots, we'd make one tap in the main, and then bring that to a split with three valves to service each three homes, which is typically what we do in these clusters. The water may be happier if we only puncture it once. This area is on septic. We've done perk tests in each of the lots and found those acceptable for the design of septic system. There's plenty of space on them to site those and also provide enough offset for those stormwater features that we might have.
The plan refers to dry wells?
Yes.
What's that for?
That is for stormwater control. The soils are not ideal. They're not terrible, but they're not ideal. And so sort of a larger formal means of trying to infiltrate stormwater into the ground is not especially feasible, especially with the slopes. So in lieu of that, essentially, each of the houses gets connected to a structure in the ground in crushed stone. Those will fill up, overflow probably in a really intense storm, but then that water can dissipate into the ground over time to reduce the volume of water coming off the site in addition to the maximum flow rate.
And as far as the electrical provisions?
So those would be trenched in underground from the streets along the common, along the driveways.
So Carolyn, normally there's a call-out scene for utilities that are kind of approved, right, for a development like this? So without that, they present something, and they presented something to DPW with more details?
Well, there are, the water lines are shown on--
I thought they were. I didn't, I didn't want to disagree with that.
Oh, okay.
And the sheets at the end were the, were the engineer drawings?
I think they're not on every plan, but there is one plan sheet that shows the water lines. Did you see it? Oh, no, no.
No.
Sorry. It's interesting you asked because I had the same conversation with David Valetta, I think, at DPW. And I think maybe an earlier version didn't have the water lines, but I--
I think unfortunately, there was a little miss in which sheets went to which people. They're not different drawings around, but there are drawings that are showing different pieces of the project. And I think it's possible that our initial submission didn't include all of them, which I apologize for.
Very good. Well, as long as somebody in the city has something that will--
One thing I can figure certainly is that DPW has reviewed the utility connection, and they certainly would have let us know in the comments if they had not.
Okay, great.
This might be a question, Carolyn. Can you just explain the thing to 125 feet? Because I looked at the zoning diagram, and it was totally unclear what that 125 feet is dimensioning.
So the 125 feet in what, are you talking about the flag lot?
The change that you asked them to make in the flag lot.
Sure.
125 is ambiguous.
Yeah, so you're-- So the standard frontage in the suburban residential district is a requirement that you have 125 feet of lot width all the way back to the rear of your structure. For flag lots, you can come to the Plating Board for a special permit to reduce that 125 feet. But, and it can go down to as narrow as 50 feet. And that's what we call the flag pole. And then the flag portion of that lot is where it opens up to a much bigger piece. So the restrict, the requirement is that you can have that narrower frontage, so in this case down to 50 feet, for a total length of 300. At that point, the lot needs to be wide enough--
And she's talking about--
Yeah. The lot needs to be wide enough to meet the 125-foot frontage.
Ideally, after 300.
Right.
That was the part that was--
Yeah, and beyond that, it can of course be wider, but it can't narrow down again until beyond where the structure is located.
So, Chris, you mentioned about the waiver for the 10% slope?
Yes.
And I think there's another waiver about some of the details around the shared driveway?
Oh, yes. And so the purpose of that is that the shared driveway requires turnouts where the driveway widens every so often. Our intention is, the minimum requirement in this scheme is a 15-foot-wide driveway. The existing driveway is 20 to 24 feet wide. It varies in some locations. We would like to retain that, but pavement's in good shape. We don't, we don't see any reason to disturb all of that. And so it might be interpreted that we're not providing those turnouts because the driveway is wider. However, it is also wide enough to act as the turnout. So we just wanted to highlight that sort of ambiguity and ensure that the board is satisfied with the driveway that we're providing.
And I would say it's not a waiver because what the shared driveway standard says is minimally, you can go down to, you know, 15 feet. But if you're going to be that narrow for a shared driveway, you have to widen out distances. So if you're already that wide, you're not going to the minimum.
That's the interpretation I was leaning from, but we wanted to cover our bases and make sure that it was clear what we were proposing to do and that everyone was comfortable.
With that wide driveway, is that all true between where that 10% slope is and lots three and four? Because that's going to be a new driveway, right? Let's give up to the cell tower, well, maybe not to the cell tower.
Right, and there's existing-- Right, and there's existing, really there's existing access all the way up to this point. This last driveway, which is now not a common driveway because it's leading to the single house. That would be narrower, but seeing that it's certain of a single house, there's no reason for that to be your house.
Thanks. So the existing house, which is kind of in the maintenance yard for the golf course, that in turn is going to be retained by the owner and used? Do we have any plans around the investigation of that area due to perhaps any use of pesticides in the past? Or is that something under our purview or the applicant's purview to look at that?
So we tested the property which we're purchasing, and there was no report of conditions, no concerns. We didn't test the property which we're now purchasing. And it's not required. I mean, you know, buyer may or may not choose to do that. But it's neither a permit requirement for you or a DEP requirement. Banks will often require it, so practically they have.
And as long, the board understands, once we approve these lots, the builder, the other app, the owner doesn't need to come before us again for any kind of review of the building operation, building process, other than working with the city's building inspector.
Right.
Well, if we want to hold questions for a little bit, then we'll open it up to the public. See if there's, okay? Is there anyone in the public who would like to come forward and speak on this application, please? If you could just state your name and where you live, that would be great for our records.
So my name is Deborah Owens. And my family lives at 50 Old Wilson Road. I live 21 Grokland Street in East Ham. So one of my questions was, I know where the house is. I know where the stream is from the road. Where exactly is the stream to the flag lot? And what is the flag lot? Is that where the other house is or?
So if I understand that there are two flag lots here, you know, where the existing little clubhouse, not the clubhouse, but the maintenance set is on Old Wilson Road where all the equipment is kept. Just to the, I want to say the east of there. If you're looking at that building to the left will be the entrance, the driveway to the first flag lot. So that would be.
So is that on the other side of? So if you're going up Wilson Road, the house is on the right?
Yeah, and that would just pass it, correct.
So that's the, the drive to the flag lot. So where the stream is, is there any building?
No, not at all. That's the area that we really, the applicant really wants to protect the city will. That stream that comes under Old Wilson Road and goes across that, the street.
So there's no building or flag lot on that side? So everything is from the stream over?
Yeah.
Okay, and a flag lot is where they can build at some point or?
Right, Carolyn, do you want to?
Yeah, so a flag lot is a lot for a single-family house. So there's one flag lot proposed to, as Mr. Kohout stated, on the left side of the existing house. But it's the, the access to it is there, but the house is actually located behind where the existing house is. Then there are three other lots proposed to be off of that driveway that goes up to the cell tower that will be around and up on the hill, and that's the extent. So there'll be five single-family house lots at the end of that.
Oh, so that's the by, the total?
Yep.
Okay, and as far as the paths and the greenway, our property is, so if you're going up Wilson Road and everything's on your right, our property is the angle that goes right up to the top of the hill.
Okay.
Um, how do you prevent people from? I, I mean, is it all signposted for path? Or are people going to be kind of coming over to our property through and down and coming out of our backyard?
Sure.
Because that's all.
Sure. Mr. Biden, if you want to talk how the city.
Yeah, we put a sign up at the main entrance to the property. So we, you know, we figure, we haven't done this yet. We figured a spot where it's safe for people to park along the edge of the road. We have looked at it. We only build parking lots when we need to. We don't think we need to. We think Old Wilson Road's wide enough for a couple of cars to park there. So, you know, we look at one of the existing trails that Gil built to the property as sort of best walkway and put, you know, a sign there that says welcome and put if a couple parks.
So it's all going to be noted? Okay.
And people, people can wander anywhere they want, but we're sort of inviting them down the trails.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So anyone else would like to speak regarding the application? Okay. Any other questions from board members?
I think it's a very good project and it should go forward. Accomplishes a number of different objectives as Wayne explained.
I'm somewhat interested about the cell phone tower and on lot three. I imagine that may be the last.
Lot four.
No, it's actually on lot three. Lot four is beyond the cell phone tower, right? If I'm reading this correctly? Yeah. But I guess the applicant feels that that lot would be.
Good cell phone service.
Good cell phone service, yeah, to you instruction. And I know the applicant said, you know, there are no health concerns or EMS or anything. It's just very unusual that that would be in somebody's backyard, but I guess they'll make up for it with the view towards mountain top. They won't be looking out their back door. They'll be looking out their front door.
A 200-acre backyard is not too bad either.
Yeah.
Are they going to put, I mean, I was just talking to someone who built these, built these things for living. Is there going to be an aesthetic component to the cell phone?
It's already there.
It's already there.
Yeah.
Buyer knows going in.
It's pretty hard to avoid.
This is nice. I think it's surrounded by some pretty mature trees, though. I think you, I mean, we went to see it as part of CPC and I don't know if there's any cell tower.
Because the hill is steep, you get some, I mean, if you designed the house right, you could hide the house. You're right, you face it in one direction, the hillside would protect you.
They're going to be looking at their phones anyways.
Yeah, because they have cell phone.
Pretty hard to miss.
So DPW just had a few comments. And they just want to see final construction plans prior to, 15 days prior to the issuance of any building permits. They did ask about, questions about potential removal of pipes that are on the city property, but I don't think you necessarily need to put that in any conditions. It's not related to their stormwater permit and it may not happen. It just depends on whether they find that there are structures that are found on the property. There, the requirement in the zoning does require that the applicant submit and submit easements for maintenance and access for the shared driveway and that those be reviewed prior to issuance of building permit and then they need to go on record as well. There weren't any plans related to PV construction, photovoltaics on the property. So I think that should be a condition of the permit that when, before the issuance of a building permit for those lots, they have to show how they're meeting that standard in the zoning.
I'm sorry, Carolyn, tell me much more again about that standard?
So the site plan review, the site plan section requires that all lot, all buildings be solar ready, essentially. So they would need to show on the building permits to the end users. So the builder for each individual house would have to show that either the roof is oriented in the right direction and is structurally sound or that there's place on the site or ground not to. They don't have to install it. They just have to show that it's ready for someone to install. There's also tree protection shown on the property. So that tree protection should be installed and inspected prior to a building permit. And that open space is typically required to be permanently protected prior to issuance of building permits for any of the construction. So that would have to be deeded over to the city. And there's also tree replacement that is shown in the plan. So that should all happen. Compliance with that section 12.3 should take place prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Carolyn, I have one more question. Has the fire department moved at this, the access, especially the last lot?
Yeah, so the, so I, I reached out to the fire chief about the grades. So that's an issue. They're asking for a waiver of the grades. The fire department requested a permit condition that sprinklers be installed in those last two house lots to offset the fact that the grades are steeper than what's allowed in the plans. And it's really about fire apparatus, not other emergency services.
I think you meet the 20 feet line also with the fire code now for the driveway for that last one. I'm not sure. I mean, it depends on what the fire department.
Yeah, he was just more concerned.
And that may be commercial, but I don't have the fire code as well.
It's pretty certain.
Yeah, but, and we just request that that condition be written as an either/or of complying with the sprinkler requirement or regrading the roads. Obviously, that changes the limited disturbance. That would trigger resubmissions, but we just don't want it.
The condition would be attached to sort of any portion of the, however, it's any portion of the driveway that is steeper than the grades that are the maximum grades allowed in the zoning. However, if there's a change to the plan, so the drive, so the grades are changed that triggers the amount of grading and tree clearing, that would require a plan amendment. So that, I think, the, the way the plans are shown now, you're asking not to make any changes. So I think the condition for the sprinklers should go in. If they change and they don't want to do the sprinklers, then they'd have to come back anyway to show you the regrading plan to meet that maximum.
Is that pressure issue, an issue with sprinklers on that last lot?
It's a crush.
Yeah, they need to be.
An emergency generator.
Wait, wait.
Get ready, plenty of taxes, plenty of.
But that has been a condition with other developments further out in the city where there isn't city water too, that they've had to have cisterns in their basement that was allowable for and build a sprinkler system, so.
For big houses.
For big houses. Yep, the public hearing is open. Please state your name and address.
Edward Etheridge of North Hampton, 60th and Athen Street. I represent Gil Verillo, the owner of the lot. What Chris just said is that if you even phrase it, I understand what Carolyn's saying as we come back for a plan amendment. But if it were phrased in the condition that the alternate, unless you come back for a plan amendment, it might be administrative, which would save us having to have the whole hearing processed again. So if you, if you use that language in your decision, it might make it easier administratively to make that decision.
I would recommend, I, I don't, it's hard to know what the extent of grading would be to get those grades down or to change in the direction. So I would be hesitant to recommend that it just be an administrative decision. It's just hard to know without knowing what the extent of the change would be.
Well, I, I'm not, yes, it would come back to planning to make that decision. I don't have a problem with that, but as requiring a full hearing for amendment is what I'm saying.
I guess, can, is it acceptable if we phrase it, any houses located beyond any portion of the driveway steeper than what's required in zoning?
She only referred to the last two, so I think that's.
Well, that, that's, that's the extent of the condition. That doesn't have any relationship, though, to changes to the plan that make the driveway less steep. So that's the issue. It's not, there's absolutely no problem with saying the condition is associated with all the house lots that are above a certain driveway grade. It's just.
I, I guess we're just, if there is a future where a plan is amended administratively, but the condition were written such that there was an obligation to have sprinklers in those last two houses regardless? That is, we're trying to just prevent that from.
I don't think, I think that you can get out of the sprinkler requirement if you regrade the road. But I think that the variety of options of what that looks like if you redesign that road is so wide that we're not comfortable saying that's going to be. Because you're going to have to chop down an acre of trees to make that work.
Right, no, it's. Okay.
It may be simple, hopefully it's.
Yeah. Add, that's complicated. You often list the conditions for special permit site plan in one list. Just to be clear, this is a site plan condition and not a special permit condition. So if they came back, they wouldn't have to open up the special permit. I would hope you see that.
My understanding as a construction project like this unfolds, it's somewhat of a development and that usually the roads and utilities are placed first before, and if there's some kind of approval by the DPW or the city regarding the extent of the road? Or is that only for public right in a way? So what I'm, I'm saying is that, does that slope need to be kind of set already before any building happens as far as the homes go?
It's existing.
No, but it's not, it's not existing all the way.
And it's just a driveway, you know, they're doing, it's really the standard in the zoning for the driveway is what, is what is required to be met, so.
So it sounds like we're, we're asking, we're being asked to approve just one waiver. Actually, the applicant has asked for two, but Carolyn, you've kind of hedged on one of them. Is our approval going to list two waivers that we're approving?
Well, I would, I mean, I think that this, the second one, there's no waiver related to the width of the driveway because they're meeting the standard of having a wide enough area to pass.
So it's just an administrator.
So I would just say it's meet, there's, there is a, the, the, there's a continuous passing lane, basically. It's a two-way driveway.
So we're just getting asked at this point for the one waiver then, for the one waiver?
Right.
Appropriate to close the public hearing?
I'd like to just go through the conditions one time that we're talking about so that we make sure that those are pretty clear for all of us sent to, while we have our experts out there in our audience. So if I heard correctly, the conditions are regarding final construction plans being provided to the planning office and the DPW?
Right, 15 days ahead of.
Yep. A requirement for the applicant to note that the building, something about the photovoltaic preparation.
Prior to building permit, the plans need to show that the buildings are solar ready.
Okay, and that the plans need to show the adequate tree protection and the tree protection has to be in place before any construction happens. Prior to any building permits, there has to be a recorded deed at the, with, by the city and the applicant regarding the conservation restrictions?
Transfer of the land to the city.
There is the condition regarding the provision of a sprinkler system for lots three and four.
And for, for those lots that are on the portions of the driveway that exceed 10%.
So not just calling out three and four? And there was one, Carolyn, I didn't get entirely about compliance with C3. Compliance with, was that back to the photovoltaic preparation? Was that in relation to the deeded conservation?
That might have been the conservation area, deeding that. There was, the only other one that I have is related to tree replacement, lot 53.
Oh, yeah, that's, this is a really, but I just missed the zoning table. I think the numbers were.
All right.
The flag lot. Can you use another version of the, the one that you sent around?
Okay.
The two-page one?
So.
The flag lot was the one. I didn't check all of them for that.
Right, so they re, they revised plan set. So the plan set on the screen is what's been submitted to the city now to show compliance with the flag lot.
That's different from what you gave me all around?
It's different.
One with the square off?
Yeah, it should be.
The zoning table shows a difference.
Oh, it does? Maybe the table doesn't match the lot layout, is that what you're saying?
That's what I was, that's my suspicion.
So the other thing is, as part of the conditions, the final construction plans have to be submitted. You know, making sure that the zoning table is consistent with the plan shown.
Actually, it was lot two that was the issue that I checked. I didn't check them all. I should check for that one.
So any other questions about the conditions or to the applicant? Before we get the motion, the post-publicary.
Someone?
Second. All favor of closing the public hearing? Any opposed? Take the motion, carry it. So if there are no more questions, there's someone brave enough to make a motion on this application with the conditions we listed?
Motion to approve the special permit with the site plan residential plus circumference space, flag law, shared yardway inside, considering a handout of 24, Old Wilson Road, Florence, map ID 44-4, with the motion conditions.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Well, I'll just second Alan's comment. That seems like a great plan and, you know, I think the city's put together a great proposal along with the city's owner and other property. I think it's gonna be a great win-win for the city extending this network. All right, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Any motion carried? Thank you.
Yeah, can we question for DPW? I don't, are they the ones who do the signs for roads?
Yeah.
I don't know what they do.
They go through seventeen at a time.
Yeah, ask the Department of Public Works, I think they have some of the answers. Yeah. In this case that I am, I'll give him a period of, I've given him my entire life. He's got me, he's got me off.
Yeah. Okay, so you're fine with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what that means is.
It was a, I don't know, I don't know, it was just a little bit, like the most beautiful park I've ever seen. A modern, that I've seen, designed like Domino Park in.
Long Island.
Domino.
It's north of Long Island.
No, no, I'm talking about, I mean, it's one thing, it's where the Domino factory was.
Yeah.
Is that the Long Island?
It's between.
Yeah, so, but I was just. If you want, if you want to be part of this development, you're gonna have to privately come with a party.
Yeah.
And so it's just this park that just had so much money.
That was a big problem for years because the original approval was that his developer, well, 2007, they happened and they, they fell apart. And that's why they sold the guy and they killed all of the stuff in Dumbo and they stopped two trees. He came and it's a great apartment, it's all built on canyon steel, like out of water, it's assembled. There's these areas, a hole in the, there's like ground and there's a hole in it, and there's water, there's missing in the. It's always got one of the coolest stuff, very cool. And you guys, there's a, there's a view of the Sappy Liberty Freeway.
It's a part of design, it's like you can't fall into it, but like, it's just been, probably until years.
Probably.
Industrial.
Right.
Water pump, you know. And they're renovating now the actual Domino factory, it's crazy. That would have been amazing, engineering or art picture, that job. Yeah.
Is there another plot there?
Well, there's a whole.
Okay, all right, you don't need that, the extension.
Right, but do you have? Oh, you got it.
He says one to rentals, it's eighty years and still a whole mansion, it's rising, it's crazy.
Well, thank you for your patience, everyone. It's eight o'clock and unfortunately, we're about to open up a 7:30 PM public hearing for St. Elizabeth's and Seaton Parish Site Plan Amendment to modify parking lot layout 99 King Street, map ID 31D, 159, 192. Carolyn, before we go, could you remind us when the planning board, initial approval of this site plan was?
I believe it's 2011, well, 12. 11, it came in, approved in 12, so, yeah.
The context of that site plan was.
So this, this is what I'm showing you right now. This is what was originally approved. So I'm Terry Reynolds, professional engineer, and I'm here for St. Elizabeth's and Seaton Parish. And this is Sacred Heart Church on King Street, and in between 2011 and 2012, this overall plan was approved, which consisted of an additional building, a new parish center here, parking both in the rear and on the side, and then additional improvements in front with a heart-shaped walkway and plantings. And so what ended up happening was this project got broken down into phases. And in the end, the, only, only the southern part of this project got built. And so currently. Here we go. All right, so this is what's currently there. So there's a stormwater system here that was designed for the overall site, and then a revised parking lot, and that's what you see today. Otherwise, in the original, there were some buildings that were torn down that you don't see, but there was a building right here that got left as gravel parking lot, which was never approved. And so part of this effort is to take care of that gravel parking lot that's been a problem for, for the city and just in general, it's running into King Street and 77 and the road. So the other thing is, is this parking lot that they have right now is not adequate for their parking needs, so they've been using that gravel area as overflow parking. So what has been proposed is move forward with sort of a phase two, which doesn't build the building, the new building over there that you've not afforded at the moment, but does take care of this gravel parking lot, and in doing so, you'll partially be creating a new parking area on the north side of the building that basically, it's, it's a little different configuration than what was there originally, but overall, it is a reduction of basically nine parking spaces from the overall design that was previously approved. It is also a net reduction in the pervious area, so that the original stormwater system will still function as, as originally approved. It's still gonna be overdesigned because it's designed for the entire parking expansion plus the building that was originally proposed that is not currently being built. So this plan is our layout and planting plan, so basically, the zoning has changed. So at this point, street trees are required, so street trees are proposed along it, along with other landscaping trees around the parking lot and providing a little buffering from the parking lot, and then building out that front walkway, the heart-shaped walkway in the front of the site. Some of the comment, one of the comments that came back was in regard to, there are some conflicts with some of these proposed trees. I think the two, there are two trees right here and here that are gonna conflict with some of the utility structures. So those will probably need to be changed to shrubs and perennials.
Just point those out again, sorry.
They're, they're right here, and then there's one there and one here. This one down here also is, is too close to where the sewer connection is, so that'll need to be moved. That, that one will be kept because it's required for the street trees, but it just needs to be moved so it's not sitting on top of the sewer structure. So.
And I'm sorry, you stated that, that this heart-shaped configuration we see on this plan is gonna be accomplished, is gonna be implemented?
Yes, yes, and that's, that's exactly what was approved originally. With, with some modification to the plantings. This, this whole project is part of building improvements for the building. So the building is proposed to have the front step area rebuilt, the pillars are, you know, in process of trying to get those rehabbed, refinished and so on. A number of different improvements in that regard. The handicap, the existing handicap ramp here on the south side is dilapidated and now it's gonna be rebuilt. It's currently not really in compliance, so it's gonna be extended by about five feet to meet, you know, handicap requirements for ramps. So that is the only improvement on that side in terms of structural improvements. There are some reallocation of the handicap spaces up on that side. These two spaces where I'm showing right here are not compliant. So those will be eliminated and replaced out where we have a walkway and a hatch area. Two additional spaces will be added over here where there's also a ramp to provide the required handicap parking spaces. There is no general public access on the north side of the building, so that's why all the handicap spaces are in the south.
So the plan that we have before us, if so, is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight handicap spaces? That's their final resting spot, so to speak?
There's six total in the end. Two are eliminated because they don't meet, they don't meet the slope requirements.
And which two are they gonna be?
Those are these two right here.
This is removed from the camera. All right.
Yeah. Additionally, so in terms of, this next plan basically is showing the stormwater system, and this is basically what was originally proposed. There are no, you know, any, any significant changes to it. It will be pretty significantly overdesigned at the moment. This is a new drywall system that was not constructed. This is sized large enough to accommodate the, the original proposed building, but at this time, it's only gonna be taking the north side of the existing building for, for stormwater management there. Otherwise, there really are no new structures other than a sewer stop that is being run across the front of the building for a potential future building when and if the diocese can afford to, to build it, if they can sell some of their other properties. I think that's pretty, pretty much it. There's not too much else. If you have any questions.
Board members have any questions before we turn to the public?
Public comment?
Okay. Anyone interested in commenting on the plan?
I'm gonna close public comment.
Well, if we do that, then we can't ask the applicant any questions, really, so we need to. I know you wanna get to this, wanna get back on time, but. So could you tell us any comments on the DPW regarding the stormwater?
Yep, so they received comments regarding stormwater, their stormwater plan. They have a separate stormwater department, so all of that is sort of separate from the planning board review. The other. The other comments related, um, from DPWs, they just wanna see final construction plans that correct some inconsistencies in the, um, in the, um, plans with, um, the types of materials being used and some, um, um, inverts and, and, um, specific information. They also, um, are concerned about, um, possibility of the proposed trees at the northeast corner of the main entrance that might conflict with the new sewer line proposed, so they want the plans to show the right, you know, adjustment of the location and the planting of those trees. And, um, that's basically it, except for some other details about just, a- again, creating, cleaning up their construction documents before they are submitted, again, fifteen days. Actually, this one says thirty days ahead of, so you guys can decide whether you think fifteen days or thirty days. I think the DPW has gone both ways, and I, I mean, fifteen days, two weeks is a good amount of time, so, um, um, the other, um, issues, um, not DPW-related, but, um, related to the lighting on the site that don't, um, um, appear not to meet, um, or could potentially be an issue. They're showing a four thousand Kelvin, um, light, and you typically require three thousand. And also, I raise a concern, my staff memo to you all, and I gave it to the applicant, um, was that, um, there, we've seen problems with these large LED lamps creating glare, um, so-
This is what I received for the updated fixture.
Okay.
And these do come in at three thousand, but they can, they use.
So- So, I understand that there was a lot of talk about public street lighting and public, when it arrived at different sites in the, in the thirty-five hundred, people liked warmer lights. That's for public street lighting, was there about, is there another? There's nothing regularly that's provided on private property, right?
Um, so, I'm not sure I know exactly what you're referring to, but yes, there's a sort of interest group in lights around.
Right.
I'm not talking about that.
That's public street lighting.
Well, I don't know, but the zoning relates to lighting on private property. Our code, actually, we, um, I have a draft of an updated lighting ordinance because it hasn't been updated for six or seven years, and it doesn't include LED stand, uh, lights. So, um, based on information that the board has heard previously about impacts of different lights, um, at light color temperature and so forth, um, the board started requiring, um, warmer lights at, and have a maximum of three thousand K instead of bluer lights, um, or cooler lights, um, beyond that. No, it's not in the zoning, but you have jurisdiction, um, reviewing site plan to require a certain level. The idea is in the updated, the draft, uh, lighting amendment will address color temperature, will address LED lamps, how they should be shaded. It's just that we haven't caught up to the newer technology.
The board often has a condition around how long the lights can stay on-
Yep.
-in the evening-
Sure.
-till operations are over or something like that, to make sure that those are part of the thing.
Did you rerun the lighting analysis with a different light?
No, fine, fine, I'm just driving that, and I would say just condition it that they resubmit, um, and, you know, some lighting design.
Because I mean, if you go to a warmer light, you need more lumens, and you get a brighter light.
Well, I, it depends, I wouldn't necessarily say you need more. I think you can accomplish, um, a light, you know, even lighting, um, you might need more, depending on how low the fixtures are, you might need more across the site. But the standard would still be the same, you can't exceed a certain, um, maximum, um, illumination level across the property. So that's not changing with any kind of conditions. It's just about the, um, and you don't necessarily need to see the revisions as long as you set the standard to say this is the maximum, you know, color temperature, um, and also glare is a stan, is already, has been a standard, or prevention of glare has been the standard for decades. But, um, I think the issue has really been that, um, the way the LED lights work is it, it's, they're set differently than incandescent lights, and so it creates a different, um, glare. It creates glare differently than incandescent lights. So that's, that, which we haven't addressed yet.
What was in the previous submission was showing like a nine thousand lumen fixture, and the zoning says you can't have more than eight thousand. So if we're gonna have some do a warmer, they're gonna have an even higher, they're already expecting a ten K, like a ten thousand. So-
Well, again, no, it's about the number of lights that you have and where they're placed, right?
Well, it's all related. I'm trying to get a minimum light level for safety in the parking lot if you won't fall down on the ice and everything-
Yeah.
-at night, so, you can have cooler lights and you have less of them, you have more light. And then there's the temperature, which you're talking about, but there's also lighting levels, but that's the glare, right? I mean, already they're, I don't care, I mean, it's fine, but like, it's just wondering like what, what's been done to each one, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we-
There's an eight thousand number in the zoning.
Yeah, and that number actually I think is a, is, um, um, is not an ac, it, it was a typo. I think it's been in there for years and we have to change that, um, I think the number that you're referring to. But at any rate, I think the, it may be the case that they need to have more of these lights, but they still can't, they still need to find the balance of how they're meeting all of those if you put these additional conditions on. So, and that's typically what the board's done.
Okay.
So, um, on, on the planning number, this is more a question about the previous work, I think, or just something that I have. On the drainage plan on seat five, on the south side of the parking lot, which really isn't under consideration. Now, that depicts an underground kind of retention system?
Yeah.
Yep, and were you part of that initially, I'm just suggesting?
No, there, there were issues with that, and that's part, that's why I was brought in to actively implement the compliance. So, at this point, I've been working with DPW, uh, fully inspected everything out there. We found some issues, um, that had to be changed. Some of the, there were issues with the overall grading of it initially, um, and so modifications had to be made in terms of drainage areas, collection and so on, uh, that I've been working with, you know, Duffy Willie's been out there, they were the contractor on the site. So I've been working with them to get all that into compliance. Um, and, and from a compliance standpoint, the only thing still hanging out there is that gravel parking area in the middle of the building.
Yeah.
But they need the parking, and so it made sense to move forward with this piece of it.
Well, that's just interesting information for us. We see more and more of these underground subterranean kind of systems for retention, um, and I, and I'm sure that, uh, DPW is also kind of looking at them in a different way as we move on, so. This also, this property, but I'm asking some of these questions because when you open up a site plan for an amendment, it kind of opens up that whole package, so to speak, again. There's some buts to the bike path in the rear of the property?
Yes.
Is there a public access to that bike path that you-
Uh, there's public access off the Goggins property, I believe that's a public access.
Uh-huh, but the church hasn't made something of itself?
No, there's, there's not, I mean, it, there's a sidewalk that runs right adjacent to the, the parking lot. Uh, I think there's a small grass strip right there.
It's connected at the church.
What's that?
I thought that was connected at the church, I didn't realize that was Goggins.
Uh, it's on the Goggins property.
Yeah, so I, you may, I don't know, George, were you on the board when this was originally arranged?
I don't think so.
So there, there was a lot of discussion when the original permit was, um, that the board pushed to, um, have, uh, the church connect, and the church didn't wanna connect. Goggins, um, uh, offered to make the connection on their property and connect to the church site.
I see. And then, once they came on the Goggins property, the Goggins property connects to the church site, is that what you said?
Yeah. Where you can have access to the church.
Any other questions for the board? Okay, and no other comments, most of them closed public hearing?
Some, oh.
Discussing? Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Most have approved? Well, then we don't have any, too many conditions at this point that we've discussed.
You talked about the timing for the lights to come off, I don't know if you wanna, um, eh, eh, but not specifically. So that was the only other one that, um, you all may consider, um, for the site lights.
Yep. There are four houses right along that northern boundary where the proposed lot is gonna be, so certainly the residents there be impacted by night lighting, and just generally that area of town produces a lot of lights, so it's a great idea to limit those to somewhat. Traditionally, churches services, and I can't speak, I'm not a personer of this church, but you know, ten o'clock seems to be a reasonable time to me.
So why don't we say eleven?
Why don't we say nine?
Not, so no one will have to run out of church.
Well, I don't think, so ten o'clock, I think is being liberal. I think most-
We're talking about automatic cameras, if they're having an event, they can keep the lights on. I mean, we have to, if we're having an event, so. We're talking about if there's nobody there, they automatically turn on, right?
Well, I don't know.
No, there's a riot.
Park?
Yeah, what about a wedding night?
If they're having an event that goes to midnight, you have to have the lights on.
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking about the random times, nothing happened.
What event, they have to midnight, I'm sure.
It's not our-
I mean, well, we have, we wanna do something so that the default is they go off at a certain time. Certainly you can override a time clock that they can go off at twelve, but we want our default to say, and, and your order of business, they'll be able to adjust those, for sure. If it's... So I would propose ten o'clock for this part?
Well, unless, what? Can't say ten o'clock, and then so they assume they have the right to override it.
They do.
Yeah, then you have to readily override that, I think, then we have said.
Well, I, I think-
I don't think we have in the past.
Well, I mean, this is a, yeah, I mean, this is a permit where like you don't have any purview over anymore, what's the-
Well, you know, what would happen is if they were continuously overriding it, someone's gonna call the city, and then we'd have a conversation with them and find out what's going on and whether or not they're in violation of their permit. I think for a one-time event, probably no one's gonna bat an eye, so I'm not sure that it's really necessary. I'm not sure how many events, you know, um, I think by ten o'clock, the most weddings are into the party off-site. Not at the church.
If they, if they have a daily midnight mass, I guess we can do this, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, and they, yeah.
Sure. Christmas Eve.
Yep.
We'll, we'll spot them, we'll spot them on the lights.
So I think we're, we're asking for a revised planting plan? Creating up the construction plan, are you done?
Yes, and I would just, I would say an old planting plan, but just for those two trees that may be in conflict with this supply.
Okay, alright. So that's a revised planting plan, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Um, and a completely new site lighting plan, or again, a revised?
Um, well, I, I don't know that you need a revised plan, you could say that you wanna see the ASBIL using, with, when, with these fixtures that they're showing, they're selected with three thousand K, achieving any other standards in the zoning, and then you could just have it as a, a lighting ASBIL.
This is what you're referring to?
Right. So then they would come at the end of the project and say, okay, here's what we installed, here are the light levels, and here we gain zoning.
And who verifies that?
The building department.
Yep, were there other, the, uh, the, the ten o'clock lighting setup, anything else? Okay, there are no other questions from the board on this application?
Let's close.
No, we close the public hearing, so most of them either approve or, uh, deny the application.
Make a motion that we approve the application for thirty-one D one ninety-two oh one for a site plan approval with the-
Site plan amendment.
Oh, right, okay. With the conditions that have been listed.
Second?
Second, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Opposed? We're unanimous tonight. Okay? Yep?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alright, we'd now like to open up a, a meeting scheduled for seven forty-five. Apologize for the delay by the Selco partnership, Verizon Wireless, a site plan telecommunications equipment on existing pole at Three County Fairgrounds, fifty-four Bear Street. Map ID twenty-five C two-five-one, and the applicant has a presentation for us.
Hi, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Uh, Ellen Fryman, I'm Representative Verizon Wireless, and with Charles Wilson Fenton, fourteen forty-one Main Street in Springfield. And, um, I'll give an overview, and then, um, if you have any questions specifically about the site plan, we have Jesse Marino from, uh, Procare here, and then we have a, um, video frequency engineer from Verizon Wireless that will talk about the coverage that will be provided by this antenna. So, um, Verizon Wireless has, um, determined that there is insufficient service at the fairgrounds, um, when they have events there. And so, um, they can remedy that situation pretty easily by just putting an antenna on a, one of the utility poles right there. They do, but, um, so they identified a pole, but it isn't gonna be sufficient height, uh, as it is now. So they're actually gonna take it down to a twenty-nine point three foot pole, utility wooden utility pole that has a light on it, that has a speaker on it right now. They're gonna take that down, put up a new pole, um, close to where that one is, and, um, another wood pole, it's gonna be forty-one feet. They're gonna put back the light and the speaker in the same location where it is now, but then they'll put their antenna on top. So, um, and then the, the, um, you know, service the, the breadth of the, of the, uh, fairgrounds and, um, and then improve service generally and, uh, and, yeah. So, pretty straightforward, pretty easy, pretty, um, simple solution, and, um, everybody's looking for service these days, so, um, and various reasons. So, that's the overview, uh, if you have any questions specifically regarding the site plan, do you have that to put out, or?
Um, no, but they have the, um-
We have one on, we have one on a board we can-
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay, if you wanna-
So our, uh, if we get to a motion tonight, the way it's worded here, it says that telecommunications equipment on a existing pole, it's really add a new pole.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Replace.
Yeah. It's like taller pole.
Oh.
Stronger.
Better.
Where's the best spot for the, to see, thank you?
Maybe on the desk, even, Mr. Allen, or whatever.
This is for four G network. Verizon's not pushing five G networks these days?
Not yet, it's coming.
Don't get ahead of us too much. So, our packet presented us with a lot of views of the pole, the installation, the location.
Yeah, I can go over what we submitted. We submitted information on the, on the visuals, on the coverage, on the, the power density, and the antennas, with the antennas, yeah, and the, and the plan, the typical package that we submit, so. And the visuals, but yeah, there's, it shows where we took the photos from, and then we did photo simulation, so we've composed the tower of what, not the tower, the pole. And so it's that-
Anybody wanna see this?
And then it shows where you could still be able to see it from, but it's, it's not gonna be different from what you're looking at.
These are impressive, Carolyn, I think we said that every applicant for these, looking at a site from north, south, east, and west, they're, they're very helpful. Any questions for the applicant before we turn to the public?
Is there anything you wanna point out on the plan, or?
No, just, I guess as far as the location, you know, obviously with Three County Fairgrounds here, this is what they call barn three. This is the old horse track here, this is the outdoor riding area, so that existing pole is here, and we're replacing it, you know, within a few feet of that existing pole. There is an existing underground surplus utility here, and there's also power right there, so we're gonna try to utilize that. We do have to bring in fiber from this pole, we're proposing to bring it underground to the pole. That's really it, as far as, you know, we're pretty centrally located in here. I think, you know, we're over three hundred fifty feet from the closest property line here, about eight hundred feet off of, off of Bridge Street, so. Pretty central in here, and sort of right down in the, in the flat area between all the barns and grassland. It is small cell equipment, so it's pretty, it's not your typical cell tower equipment. It's kind of an Omni Metro cell antenna, they call it. Pretty small, exist, you know, elevation of existing poles here, and our, our replacement is here. Basically, there's a meter disconnect, small radio, and then the antenna equipment goes to the top of the pole.
Very near the size of the pole we saw up at the gallops.
No, I mean, these, I mean, our rep is here, but these are, you know, for smaller areas, you know, five hundred, thousand feet, very kind of tight location for where, where the objective of the coverage is.
So, I know the fairground is in flood plain area of Meadows, is there any disturbance of trenching or the erection of the pole that-
Well, since it's a replacement pole, the pole's already there, so it's just taking one out and putting one back in. There shouldn't be an issue there, and DPW didn't have any comments?
And we're not proposing to change any grades or anything, any, you know, we're not adding any impervious, you know, it's, as a classic site plan, you don't really have traffic, we don't, it's not a manned facility, very limited maintenance, it's a, you know, most of the maintenance kind of things they do from the switch, which is offsite, so you don't really, it's not, it's not even really, people don't really go to it even as, even as little as a normal cell tower, so it's, um, it has those kind of advantages.
Questions for the applicant? Well, why don't, at this point, we'll go up to the floor, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor and opposition to the application? Quite crowded, waiting for something else. That's good. Well, keep going. We have an ordinance in our zoning around cell towers, Carolyn, that once one is erected, and maybe wrong, that other carriers can avail themselves of that tower, or?
So, it's not a require, so when there's a new pole, so there's, there's a threshold, if there's an existing pole, and, and for the purposes of this, we look at this as an existing facility that they're adding to, just happens that they have to replace it in order to be stable enough and meet, you know, the weight requirements. But the, if you're creating a new monopole, the board can ask for a co-location. So these are, again, sort of the Old Wilson Road style, you know, hundred thirty foot tall, ninety to hundred thirty foot tall poles. So that's, that's definitely for new construction, the board can ask for a requirement for co-location. This is existing at site plan. I think that, I mean, you can ask if it can accommodate a second one, but this is, this is much smaller than those typical ones where you, you know.
Cause it's, but it's, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not an existing telecommunications tower, it's just got speakers and floodlights for the fairgrounds. There's not equipment on here now from Verizon.
Right, but what we call, so, anything can be, you know, existing in, from church steeples or water towers, or anything of that sort. If there's an existing structure onto which a facility is going, then it's trigger site plan versus a special permit for brand-new something that's never been in the ground in that location before. So you've approved a lot, not a lot, several along Elm Street corridor that are in different locations on existing buildings, for example. Those all trigger site plan. So we review this as being there was an existing pole there, they're not planting something brand-new that's ever been in the ground there. So that's why it's site plan versus measure.
Okay, alright. Any other questions for the board? Pretty straightforward. I don't think we need any more information for the applicant or the public, and I hear most in the closed public hearing.
So, okay.
Any discussion? Alright. So a motion for this, it's not listed here, but this is a site plan then, or this is some what?
Site plan, yes.
Should be, site plan approval.
It's a site plan approval.
I moved for a site plan approval for twenty-five C two fifty-one, Three County Fairgrounds, Verizon pole.
Sorry. Sorry, any discussion? Alright, and I assume the fairgrounds is leasing this, they may be making some money for it, which is a benefit. I don't know for sure, I've been hearing from anybody at the fairgrounds, but I would hope so. Why don't you keep them going?
My name's Jake Price, I have another general-
I'm sorry, Jake, we closed the public hearing, I wish you would come up earlier.
Yeah, we're okay, the fairgrounds is fine.
Okay, good, good, alright. So there's a motion to be made, anyone of those in favor of the motion, maybe seconded? Anyone opposed? Alright, most in carries, thank you very much. Jake, we'll get to you next time.
I used to live down there.
It's interesting, some of the rest of the hours to really help with that.
I can plug into the side, I think the right side, was there a U C plug there?
There's one on the left, but I'm not gonna-
I think you used the one on the right, the slot on the right.
Do you want that surface?
Yeah.
Well, is it, I don't see that, but you could. I use it for work. I try not to work there. It's a good idea. This is, this is one that's kind of my, 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 they have one this month, the last time.
Okay, so we're catching up here, and we'd like to open up an eight o'clock public hearing now by Devin Howe, a site plan amendment for Syncarfa Northampton to relocate underground utilities to overhead, Park Hill Road Florence, MAP ID forty-nine twelve. I think most of us were here when we first, maybe not, when we first approved this large permit for the large solar array. Some of us were here at that point in time. Well, keep going. So this is an amendment, could I have a presentation?
Good evening, Chair members of the board, my name is Devin Howe, representing Syncarfa Northampton LLC. Here with me tonight is Graham DeTauski from Syncarfa, as well as Mahi Batulaw from CS Energy, the construction managers for the project. As the Chair stated, we're requesting an amendment to the site plan that was previously issued by this board. And really this, since this project was approved, a few things have happened. First is, while we were submitting for a building permit, we really wanted to preserve more trees along Park Hill Road. So what we did is, instead of constructing swales along the entire edge of Park Hill Road, we designed a twelve-foot wide field-engineered road. And what that allowed us to do is, is really meander that road slightly such that we wouldn't have to cut all the trees, I believe the initial count was around a hundred and sixty trees or so, and we reduced that number to about sixty. So, what we're requesting is to install three new utility poles along Park Hill Road, as well as additional equipment required by National Grid for the interconnection. The alternative was to install underground conduits. We were originally showing the location of that conduit along the center of Park Hill Road. National Grid was going to require that, that, those conduits be installed along the edge of the roadway. And what that would cause is a substantial amount of trees to be cut and removed along Park Hill Road, along what was originally approved. So, we feel that it's a much better design, and as National Grid's requiring above-ground overhead wires, that it'd be more beneficial to save a substantial amount of trees as well. So, to give the board an overview of where we're proposing these poles, so to the left of this image, about where we're standing on the left-hand side of the roadway is the first pole location. I believe National Grid's going to be working with the tree warden to determine how many trees do need to be cut for the overhead wires, as well as additional pruning that may be required. But this, so the first pole would be located to the left, and the second pole would be right as that road starts to turn and head uphill, it'd be located on the right side of the road. So this second image is right as that road started to curve back up, and on the right-hand side of this image is about where that utility pole, the second utility pole would be installed, and that's after the Hanum Brook crossing. And one thing I did for, not mention, is that if we were to go underground with the electrical conduits, then the DPW department was gonna require to replace the culvert crossing, and it would be worked within the buffer zones, and we wanted to minimize any potential impact to the wetland resource areas that could happen if we were to go underground with those electrical conduits. So this third image is looking westerly, down Park Hill Road. We're standing right at about the site entrance. These photos were taken, actually, this past Tuesday, so they're, they're very current. About where that tree is, is the final and third location of the utility pole. I believe that tree would have to be cut as part of what we're proposing.
So you're saying that you save trees by going above, because you just have to cut a couple of trees, but if you go below, I guess the roots, like, I don't understand why there's less trees cut down if you go-
Because National Grid would require that those conduits be a few feet off the edge of the roadway, and there's, there's a substantial amount of trees along that edge of the roadway.
But so, wouldn't you have to cut a bunch of those trees for the, for the line?
There'll be a lot less trees that would need to be cut if we were to use electrical poles with overhead wires, as opposed to if they were installed underground.
It's like in the plan, the wa, the line itself usually is above the road, not off to the side, because they're alternating sides, poles aren't alternating sides. I mean, it's not, this isn't, this is going, I mean, in terms of this, this won't negatively affect the, the aesthetic, because it's going up the d- Yeah.
No, it, it just makes the situation during a storm a little bit more impactful, that trees cutting the wires or something like that underground.
Yeah.
And it's also cost savings for the applicant, I would assume, to do this rather than- Continue, anything else?
I, I just, looks like an answer and a question.
And then, once you hit the, the entrance to the project, the last pole, it'll go underground from there to your-
Yes, it'll go underground to, to pads with the relative equipment. The first pad's got a mounted switch gear and utility service meter, and then the second pad has the utility vest meter and utility PV meter on it. And just to add to that, we originally had on our approved plans, three utility poles that were to be installed right at the entrance, and those three poles are now those two pads.
Okay, great. Carolyn, is there anything we should know from DPW's comment, or they?
Um, DPW certainly had, actually prefers the location above ground, they had a previous written condition in terms of work in the roadway, that if they were to do it underground, that the culvert would have to be replaced. They don't really have any concerns about, um, and that, basically, the board didn't approve the overhead utilities, that this, their condition would stand to replace the pole across Hanum Brook. And they did have a question about the decommissioning bond, although it should be less than, but they've already posted it, but it was for decommissioning the underground conduit as well. So I don't know if there's a need to amend the bond, or the next time it renews to, to do that. I'm not sure that's, I'm sure it would still cover the above ground, so that was the only other comment.
Any other questions for Mr. Howe before we?
Alright. Mr. Chair, if I may, another comment from the DPW was just that they were asking for stamp plans. I do have three stamps, exhibit plans with most I can just break-
Okay, yeah, I'll break that, I'll take those down. There was one other issue with the plan, there, there's a requirement in the zoning for screening along the property boundaries of, of the property owners. I think the previous plan was approved, there was a tree line that was shown that was gonna remain, and so there wasn't any particular, the arduous review of that property boundary, but I took the trees down for the PV array. It was clear that that remaining stand of trees did not qualify to meet the standard for screening, so they're still obligated to meet that screening on that side. I don't, I haven't seen plans yet for that, but I just wanna put that out there, that that's an outstanding issue.
And were you aware of that?
If I can actually address that.
This is, my directions are pretty bad. This is, my directions are pretty bad. This is up the slope to the abutters, to the.
On the east.
On the east side.
Florence Road side versus Lendell Road.
Right.
And Mr. Chair, can I just, could I pass out some landscaping plans to the board?
Sure.
They did not, no, because they were focused on, on the poles. However, it is an amendment and it's an issue that would arose since the last time, so. Yes, it could be approved at administrative level. I just wanted to highlight.
I think it's, anytime something like this comes up, I think it teaches me about things we should have noticed during the hearing or perhaps talked about. And now we have another opportunity to look at. Pretty full size.
Right, thank you.
So if we look at just the plan on the screen, the property in question is Mary Carol's property. She's actually here tonight. And what I've done on this plan is I've highlighted her house in red. And there's really, so we had to cut that stand of trees in the southeastern corner of that site. And once we cleared that up, it opened up more of the site that was previously, I think there was like a hundred feet of mature trees that we're replacing on the northern portion of the site. Excuse me, of the site. So what we're proposing to do on the landscaping plan is to install twenty-eight arborvitae's to provide screening to the property. This is an image of her property. Yes, relatively hard to see on the computer. See if this one does a little bit more justice. But this is looking right at where we're proposing that screening. On the left-hand side of the screen, there's some existing pine trees. That really is the edge of where we're proposing, where we would start our screening and would extend approximately a hundred and thirty-five feet to the right. And that would provide screening in accordance with the zoning requirement.
Were you able to have this discussed in with your abutter?
Right here.
So we've personally been out on the site with her a few, like once. This was a couple of weeks ago and we've been working to produce this plan.
Thank you. So in a minute we'll hear from the public and you'll have an opportunity to talk to this plan. Any other questions before we open it to the public? Okay, well, thank you very much for this supplemental information. So at this time we'll open it up to the public for any comments about the application for the amendment.
Sure. Mary Carol Skinner, eight oh nine Park Hill Road. My understanding of the project certainly changed as it happened. You know, so in hindsight, as I said to all of these gentlemen, it was surprising to me they could clear cut as much as they did to the property. We spoke to multiple employees of the project and it was given many different answers on where the cut lines were going to be. It ended up the bottom wire fence is thirty, from thirty-three feet, everything was cut. So on that corner of the property, this doesn't do it justice because it's so dark. After every tree in the field was cut and then every tree on that corner was cut. And then every tree on the other side was cut. The wind shear one is amazing. That blows out of that field now. When we had those fifty mile an hour winds the other day, even more stuff came down. But I did ask and they have presented, I can't quite tell because I don't have what you have, to move the plantings because all the original plantings, none of them were proposed in front of me. They were all, I own all the land in front of the neighbor's house, so I am your only residential abutter on the that side, the east side, I guess you'd call it, of Park Hill Road. So now all I look at is construction trucks. That's it. It's all I see except for one little part of the property where there's maybe ten or twelve foot little, you know, green saplings. So I feel like change the fact that you already approved it. So I want as many trees as possible planted so I don't have to see this project. And I want them to be big. And then on the other side, whichever direction you call that, you know, it slopes, so it's a lot harder to give me some buffer, visual buffers. So that's what I've asked for. I went to the town meetings. I didn't come to these town meetings. I went to all the meetings in the fields. I traveled for work because I couldn't be there every maybe. So here I am in hindsight staring at all this stuff. You know, it's my front yard. I walk my dog. I stare at it. I listen to it. I get blown away by it. So I want you to plan as probably more than you already even proposed today and more on that side. So that's what I'm asking for, as many trees as possible and as big as possible. I'll take some arborvitae's, but they're not native. They took down three hundred year old oak trees. They took down birch. They took down poplar. They took down, you know, they didn't take down arborvitae's. So I, I would like to kind of see that plan and kind of have a visual, like when I go out in my yard, I want someone to say they're going to start here and they get in here. And I want that to be real information. And I want someone else to tell me, well, I never said that. I didn't say that.
A hundred and thirty feet, is that, is that what was said? Hundred, extending it a hundred and thirty feet?
So if I can have, so I think what was said is there's some existing low growing pine trees that.
That's kind of the middle as I'm describing.
Yeah, exactly.
The left corner, the middle and.
Yes, so right in the middle is those, those low growing pine trees.
Can I see the paper version that you proposed?
I think just to clarify, the bottom line is, you know, the zoning says there has to be a continuous screen six feet tall evergreen, so it's not going to be deciduous trees. Is the, is the screening standard, six feet upon planting, five feet of width. So if this doesn't suffice along the property line when they plant it, they'll have to add more. So we typically do an inspection after the project is done to make sure everything's been completed. And then would also address that. So even if they added symbols in the plan and it weren't, and it wasn't enough, they, they would have to make sure that meeting the zoning requirement.
What we would like to be able to do as well is really the trees that are located within the two hundred foot outer repairing zone, those cannot be moved due to the order of conditions. There are however, twenty trees that are located outside of that conservation commission jurisdiction.
That's on the other end of the property.
No, it's on the, so if we're looking at, it's on the north side. So we talked about the bottom side, the, the, the middle and then the top. So on the top side, there's twenty trees that are located outside of the conservation commission jurisdiction. And what we would like to be able to do also is change the species of those trees. I believe most of them are like oaks, so we'd like to use more of an evergreen tree, switch those out. To an evergreen tree. So.
Just switch out the tree.
They haven't been ordered yet. They haven't been planted.
But I'm, I'm sorry, are these trees?
They're not existing trees.
Okay, all right, yes.
Yeah, so, so these trees have not been planted.
Okay, thank you.
So what we would like to be able to do is just switch out the species of trees, still need the significant tree ordinance, but have more of an evergreen tree that could provide a better screening than an oak tree, for example. Which is what we have on our approved case.
But those do not address the abutters concern because they're over here on the southern portion of the plot. The trees you're talking about switching out. Are you talking about these along the south?
So these trees along the south, these are, these are like oak trees in, you know, obviously the leaves fall during the winter, you know, the winter time. So what we would like to be able to do also is switch some of those trees to an evergreen tree that we could work, excuse me, with the abutter and locate them in such a way that it would provide a better screening.
So if you're a recent visitor, this is a separate amendment to address all these issues. This is not part of the hearing. We're talking about this now, right?
Right, this is a required, well, it's not, so they actually don't need an amendment to switch trees necessarily because the requirement is to have an evergreen screen on the boundary. So you did look at this plan previously and approved those trees, but they could, evergreen trees also meet the standard. So no, it's not necessarily, it's not part of your vote tonight is really about the poles. No matter what happens with your vote tonight, they still need to plant those screening, those screen trees on that side because that, otherwise they would be in violation.
Are these other parties not in that original plan?
Not down here, no.
That's the only difference.
Right, right, right.
So, so on the approved plan, there was.
That was the adjustment when you signed the field how it was.
Yeah, so once, you know, we opened up the field, Mary Carol spoke to us and we discussed adding some planting there.
Number one, I'm not sure why we're spending so much time talking about it. It's not part of the application. And they have to comply with it anyway. But number two, a question, do arborvitae's count as satisfactory evergreen plantings? I mean, they.
They're so unsatisfactory.
They're very limited in how, how high they get and they certainly don't look like natural trees.
They grow twenty feet tall.
In twenty years.
They're fast growing. I mean, actually the benefit of them, of them, they grow wide and tall very quickly. And you can get them, you know. Right.
Can I just take a few more minutes and just ask? If you can look at the plan, my point is they've done a lot to protect the brook and the town asked for more land to protect more of the brook. And that was all approved. You asked for it, you got it, you gave it. My question is, look at all these trees next to the brook. No one lives there. What is that? Why are they not in front of my house? My property, your residential property. I'm a taxpayer. Why aren't those trees in front of my house? That brook is contaminated. You're trying to save it, but why are you planting all, look at all those trees. Look at all those trees, front of the brook. None of them in front of the property.
We understand that, yeah.
All right, that's it. But you get my point.
Yep.
Point taken.
Can I speak?
Yeah, hold on just one sec. Let's make sure before we open up to more public comments. Folks understand our diagram? Yep. I believe, you know, one of the reasons why a lot of those trees, those replacement trees for all the trees they cleared here was because they are where they are. They're, they're not going to impact the solar array from that eastern side of the sunlight.
There are also required mitigation under the order of conditions from the conservation commission. So there's nothing that this board can do about those plantings. It's a separate jurisdictional mitigation requirement.
Okie doke. So yes, we have opened up the public comments. So if there's someone else who'd like to speak about the application, please come on up. Just state your name for the record and your address.
Farnsworth Levinestein, eighteen Dewey Court. Six foot trees do not provide her with any protection. You can buy very large evergreen trees with a lot of money so that she actually regains some protection after they cut down a hundred foot, feet of trees. And while they're not ever, and arborvitae take like twenty years to get twenty feet tall. They're the slowest growing evergreens around. That's my understanding. There are non-evergreen trees that will grow thirty or forty or fifty feet tall in five years and would give her much more protection while the other trees are growing. But it's awful what they did to her and I'm very sorry.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like their comment?
Graham DeKowski, I represent Syncarpa. Just to add to the gentleman's concerns, if the board is willing to give us a variance on the species for the screening, we'd be very willing to work with Ms. Skinner to put slightly higher trees if the board's open to that. And it doesn't have to be limited to the evergreen species.
But that.
I mean, it's not, but that's not a forest tonight. I mean, I, certainly we consider that.
I'm trying to take into her, her concern and the consideration.
Like won't that, not through, she can fill the screening all winter? All winter, you can see right through it because it's a deciduous tree.
Well, A, you would be asking for variance, the planning board can't.
Agreed, I'm just, I'm just talking about theirs.
There are other alternatives for the evergreen screen, but you know, the arborvitae does grow quickly and if you pick the right feet size, it will, you know, it will be a tall screen. But that's the point of the zoning piece. So you could certainly plant in addition to that, as long as you're meeting the screening piece, you can pick whatever evergreen tree that makes sense for the site. So there's no restriction on that. It just has to be a year after that, as you said.
But are, and we're also dealing with the extent of the screening at this point?
Well, no, it's not before you. They need to meet the zoning. So the zoning is what it is. What's before you are the polls. Yeah.
They can meet the zoning and then add some poll trees if they want.
It's always, it's always worth saying, go above and beyond.
Right.
To, in the interest of the.
Oh, we are committed to working with Ms. Skinner.
Appreciate your offering.
I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
I appreciate that.
And I'm sure you could also be with the city arborist too, who would provide some other professional input into that.
Yeah, that's not really their role, the city's arborist.
Rather than a gentleman.
But I will just say on the issue of the, just one more piece is the reason why the minimum planting size isn't taller than six feet is because the older the tree that you plant, the harder it is to survive and grow and thrive. And so the, I don't think in any instance the code would require, or would I recommend the board say taller than what's the minimum. More is not the issue.
I would just say, Chris, to Ms. Carol and any other, you know, residents, I mean, I, it's, it is difficult living next to a site like this and, and, but the project is, is so important and the renewable energy that it represents and, and our, our city's commitment. So I just on a personal level, you know, thank you. I know it's, it's difficult.
I don't have a problem with the solar power project. It's just all of a sudden it's like all the trees are gone.
Yeah, no, and I, but I just personally want to say thank you.
That side of the road to look. You should drive down to my street and look. But, you know, I appreciate the project too. Appreciate them trying to make an effort, but I think as a learning curve for the committee, I think you, you just approved too much to begin with. They should not have been allowed to clear cut to the boundary. It shouldn't have happened in my view. Clear cut to the fence. Doesn't make sense to me.
Any other comments? Okay, any questions from the board on the installation of the poles, the request to? Does this need to go back to the conservation commission for any work on the pole installation?
No, it is, oh, so the work is all within the existing limit of work that was originally approved by the conservation commission.
How much of that approval was around the installation of a new culvert? And this is certainly less grievance, right?
Well, the, oh, no, they never got approval for a replacement culvert. No, so that was one of the issues as well is if they have to replace the culvert, that's a whole nother permitting path that not only includes the conservation, it includes probably the Arne Corps because it's a, yeah. So they, so what they had originally approved drainage and grading and the work in the riverfront. So the footprint of that approval is still what they're working with.
Mr. Chair, if I can also just add to that. So we are within a limited work as well as the Wetlands Protection Act does have some exemptions to the Wetlands Protection Acts if you meet certain criteria. I listed those on the plan. I believe one of the requirements is you have to be, the new poles have to be at least ten feet from wetland resource areas. And we provided dimensions on the plans. There's a few additional requirements on just like where the vehicles have to be for the installation of those utility poles. As well as just the, the. for the installation of those utility poles, as well as just the, the bracing relative to those poles. But we've added those notes to the plans.
Okie doke, if there are no other questions by the board, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Reposed, so moved? So in terms of the pole installation, do we have any kind of condition? There was a note about the arborist meeting with the company prior to installation, I don't know who.
That's not, so the planning, that's a separate jurisdiction. So all this work is in the public right of way, which falls in the jurisdiction of DPW. So for tree cutting on private property, that's planning board, but in the public way it's DPW. So you don't need to add on anything of that. That was just more, more no comments to, to the applicant.
Very good, very good. Then as I understand it, there are no conditions around this amendment at this point? Okay, now for the comments, questions by board members? All right, a motion to approve or deny the application for an amendment?
A motion, a motion to approve a site plan amendment for Sin Capa, North Hampton, to be relocated on the ground to each other head post at Park Hill Road, Florence Map ID four nine dash one two.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Seconded, thanks. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed?
Nope.
Thanks. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And good luck in your discussions.
Thank you.
I hope y'all were able to work something out.
That's a good move.
That's been a good, good roll.
Now, we're gonna hear, we're gonna have a discussion about a proposed zoning amendment to allow modifications to non-conforming zones. When changes meet all the zoning requirements except for the existing non-conformities. I think we need to turn to our knowledgeable staff to assist in the background and presentation.
Sure. Let me just see if I can put this proposed language on this right here. See if this works.
We did discuss this briefly a while ago, some of this came up because of the Dewey Court discussion with the zoning board of appeals and.
Well, the, yeah, so the impetus for the change was related to that, but it's certainly an issue that affects.
Affects many others.
Yeah, structures around the city. Actually, many lots, dozens, and commercial ones as well. So the proposed.
We're experimenting with some new technology, presentation technology.
Mr. Chairman, I brought hard copies of the existing bylaw and the proposed.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, okay. Um, so. Section, Chapter nine subsections of the ordinance addresses all sorts of pre-existing non-conforming uses, structures, and lots, and what can be done with things that predate current zoning. And there are different situations depending on what is being proposed for change or extension. So it can deal with the uses on a parcel, it can deal with the structure itself being changed. So there's a, there's currently, and there are many different ways that things can be addressed. They can either be done, this, this section of the ordinance allows for modifications either by right, sometimes by special permit, or sometimes by what's called a finding by the zoning board, or in the most limited circumstances, a variance by the zoning board of appeals. So section nine point three B in particular states that, addresses conforming uses on non-conforming lots and has different situations in which those can be changed. So what's being proposed is, let me just go through the code. So states a non-conforming use on a pre-existing non-conforming lot may be changed one by right to the same conforming use on a conforming structure which meets all the dimensional density requirements of the current zoning, except for lot size, frontage, and depth, and the lot size, frontage, and depth requirements don't change. Or with a finding, when the change or extension is to a different conforming use, which requires the same or less minimum lot with frontage depth setbacks and parking that is required for the present use and the lot doesn't fully conform to the present zoning requirements for those, that proposed use. Or with a variance, or with a combination of those two things. So the proposed language is to modify section one to say, or be subsection one, as a right to the same or different conforming use. Adding those words, in a conforming structure which meets all the dimensional density provisions of the current zoning, except for the pre-existing non-conforming dimensional elements. And then would strike the remaining portions of the code related to the issues of if it changes the requirements for lot size, frontage, depth, and, and eliminates the requirement for a finding from the zoning board of appeals below that. So the reason for this change is, is very consistent with the way the code has been amended over time to make things that meet the zoning in all respects to be by right instead of creating another permit hurdle for an applicant. And the, and of course, this doesn't preclude other permit reviews. So if a new use in any scenario, it could be a commercial use downtown, let's say you need, you, an applicant has a second driveway they want to put in, but that triggers special permit. They can still fit all of that on the site plan, but actually it triggers a special permit. So that would go to the planning board for a special permit, but not require a finding or not be prohibited outright because of the language that's in this code. So the, that's the reasoning behind allowing it by right when every other aspect of the use and the lot or the structure can accommodate it without creating a different or a new non-conformity. So that's it in a nutshell.
Yep.
Carolyn, I don't understand, I must be totally misunderstanding this, but grammatically, the, the, the lang, the words that are, have a line through them are being struck.
Right.
Right? So why does it end in the middle of a sentence?
Which section, one? As a right to the same or different conforming use in a conforming structure which meets all the dimensional density provisions of the current zoning except for the pre-existing non-conforming dimensional elements, period.
But it goes on that are pre-existing non-conforming such as.
That's, the one I sent you should have been struck. So what's on the screen is what the most recent language is.
Well, that's different from what, why not?
Do you have those, that, that phrase struck in your copies?
I think I do, Mr. Chairman.
So there was an earlier version that.
Can we accept?
But after, so Alan, after the city solicitor reviewed this, reviewed that, made additional changes. So that may be the issue, because I don't know, but this is the one that I sent out last week, I think. Okay.
So, please, see what you have if it could.
So, and what I have is that one.
Okay.
That I just.
Do you know what, do you, maybe you didn't see review all, because there, because what you're showing, it might be the.
I think the confusion is there's an underlying, because there's a line of being struck out, it might be confusing.
So the strikeout starts with that, are, that, uh, uh.
I think that's, step like that.
See the right-hand column, it may just be the way your computer was viewing it.
Because he has much more.
I'm reading my computer.
Existing perform.
Operator error.
If you send out word documents, like people couldn't touch the keyboard and the changes. PDFs are a little safer, because then you know what you're sending.
Yeah.
Dimensions, elements here. Dimension elements.
Yeah, that's a good point for next time.
Hands there, oh, that, that's weird.
Yeah, maybe if you cross that, that's where you. See?
Yes.
So, and just to put this in a little context, we're in this process of zoning approving or reviewing a zoning amendment, that's why this is called a hearing. Could you explain the next steps?
Sure, yeah. So this is a, this is a proposed zoning amendment. So what happens is, the city council refers, the amendment goes to the city council, it referred out to public hearing. There are two bodies that hold a public hearing, planning board and city council subcommittee. I think it's still going to be legislative matters or that ordinances and legislative matters. City council holds a public hearing. Both the planning board and city council subcommittee make recommendations to the full council. Then the full council is charged with making a determination about whether to adopt any ordinance.
So for our purpose tonight, if we.
Just a recommendation.
Complete this, it's just a recommendation, or to continue it if we feel like we don't have enough information.
Right, yeah. And it's not been scheduled yet for legislative matters because they've just been reconstituted, so.
Any questions for Carolyn or on the wording before we move on to the public? Okay, we'll open the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm John McLaughlin, the law firm of Greenhouse, with the mayor approach and give some handouts.
Sure.
Slides that I have.
Sure. Okay. Old school work sometimes.
School, I learned a figure today, so. Hope the alternate is left, I don't have enough for you.
Well, I'm the only important one, I have this in the record. Otherwise, they're going to get suspended into the record.
Hopefully, we're not surprised to read this.
No, I can just tell you what it all says, I'll just tell you what it says. At least, I said, my name is attorney John McLaughlin, and I represent Mark Mongio. And he owns a piece of property that's next to the infamous thirty-four Dewey Court. And he's also supported by all of his neighbors, I believe, I don't believe anyone is not supporting what we're doing. What we're doing is we're involved in a land court action right now against the city and against the zoning board of appeals for approving a finding, which they should never have approved in regards to the Dewey Court situation. And, and that's why we're here tonight. I mean, this is not a normal situation where every ten years or so you go to recodify your zoning and the ordinances would be proposed, there'd be the press involvement, there would be a public hearings in Florence and downtown and the other wards. All of a sudden, you know, the city gets into trouble in a lawsuit. There's the ball of Dewey Court and maybe two or three or four other developers who want to build on illegal lots.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm totally confused. You said that you're here because you're involved in a land court action.
Right.
About a finding from the ZVA, but this is the planning board.
Right, but what is happening is the city is about to lose the land court action.
Well, that's obviously your opinion, I don't have a clue whether that's going to.
There, that's fine, but what has happened is one remedy out of the situation is to change the law. And that is why we're here, this is not a normal occurrence. We're not looking through our bylaws to change them for any other reason, yes.
If I may just interrupt, so I've been on the planning board for ten years in the two thousands and I've been another couple of years now. And though we have, over time, zoning hiccups have come up in a number of places. So we've, we've gone back and we've proposed zoning amendments and we've approved them. And not in relation to anything, so it, certainly it is very timely that this has come up with Dewey Court. But let me say that this isn't something that's totally out of the ordinary for the, for the planning board to look at or for the planning officers to kind of call up.
I understand that, because many times a few amendments come up instead of a whole recodification. But what this amendment will do is change a lawsuit that's existing in court right now with the city and the zoning board as the defendants. And if you pass this, we will lose. If you don't pass this, I think the city attorney will tell you and the developer's attorney will tell you that we're going to win. So that's what this does, okay? But I also think that this affects many other developers, many other properties. Because you can't spot zone, you can't say, oh, let's just change the zoning in Dewey Court, that's illegal. So to, to make the change, you have to make the change for everybody. And it's going to have a huge ramification. They're only changing a few paragraphs, but what it amounts to is this, what you now have is a bylaw, excuse me, an ordinance, that says, if you have an illegal lot, okay, either, which is usually either frontage problem or area problem. If you have an illegal lot with your use on it, you can change that use to a new use, so long as it's not more intensive and so long as there's a finding from the zoning board of appeals that says this isn't substantially more detrimental than they thought. That's what your existing bylaw has, your ordinance has, which is a good ordinance. It says, don't make it more intensive and make sure that it's not abusive to the neighbors. That's what you have. What you're saying now is that a developer can come in to an illegal lot and put a new change with the changes, there's only one, the major change is going to be, it's going to go from a residential one-family.
Is that an illegal lot or a previous non-conforming lot?
It's a previous non-conforming lot.
That doesn't make it illegal.
No, I'll call it a previous non-conforming lot. It's a non-conforming lot that is, let's say it has a one-family house on it. And now what they want to be able to do without a finding from the zoning board and with the right to make it more intensive, they want to take that and put in something different. The common change that you're going to see is apartments or condominiums on a non-conforming lot. A lot that's lucky because of the guarantees under your bylaws, your ordinances in the, in the zoning statutes, that they can exist as a non-conforming lot. For example, what's happened in Dewey Court, just as an example, is it was a single-family home. They want to put in fifteen-unit apartment on a non-conforming lot, all right? And that's going to happen throughout the city, not just in Dewey Court. I, I've had someone come to me since I started this lawsuit for another neighborhood with the exact same problem. And, and what, everyone's waiting to see what you guys are going to do. Because either you can give the zoning board of appeals the authority to make decisions, is this going to be bad for the neighborhood or not, or you can let the developers just do what they want. Right now, the zoning board would still have to say whether substantially more detrimental or not to the neighbors. You're taking that away, that's gone. Somebody has one little house on a lot that's terrible, that has hardly any frontage, they can come in and put in a fifteen, thirty-unit apartment building. And in fact, in most of the zones, you could put in a six-unit without any special permit. So somebody could have this little house next to them on an illegal lot, excuse me, non-conforming lot, and come in and put six units without a special permit, just as a right. So that's what you're creating there, it's only a few words. And the other thing I want to show is that it's very, very, very unusual. I've given you the pertinent bylaws from the towns in the local cities. Nobody, nobody, nobody does this, that I could tell. Now, I, I got these today offline, okay? So hopefully they're up to date. The other thing is you have plenty of time, you have sixty, I've given you a copy of the statute forty-eight, section five, that governs how cities change their ordinances. You have sixty-five days after it's given to you to actually hold the hearing or finish the hearing. You have sixty-five days after it's given to you to actually hold the hearing or finish the hearing. So you've got plenty of time. You could have Alan Seewell look at this and see if he agrees with it. Who else does this? Nobody does this. This statute, there's not a measured statute at all. You could do a statute that says, okay, if you have zero frontage, we're, you can't do anything more intense and you need a finding. Or, or you could say, if you've got real frontage, but you're only five feet short, maybe we can let you do this. There's all kinds of things you could do with the language to change your ordinance. But what you have here is nothing more than a dream statute for a developer. This doesn't do anything for any of the butters or neighbors. And like I said, Springfield, Amherst, Hadley, East Hampton, nobody does this. So why? It, so you just have to understand, you recommend this, you're doing something that nobody does. And it's only good for the developers. If there's nothing in here for the butters or the neighborhood, nothing. And you're making it a very strange aberration. Also, I've heard people say that, well, Carolyn said that, you know, oh, the zero frontage in Dewey Court, that's just a technical issue. It's not a technical issue. It's a real issue. Some of these lots that are non-conforming are non-conforming for a reason. Dewey Court is the butt end of the dead end, all right? And so the butt end of the dead end, you know, if, if you say, it really has zero frontage, and the city has said that, it has zero frontage. And it has zero actual frontage, not just a technical issue. The houses along the sides of the street, if they have, let's say, a hundred-foot frontage, that's a real a hundred-foot frontage. You can, you can have a development with a driveway here or, or access here, you can do things with that kind of frontage. But when you're at the butt end of the dead end, your real frontage is only just the width of the road. Because you don't have frontage along the road, you have, you have, if you want to call it frontage, across the road. So these are really bad lots, and there's consequences to having a bad lot. For number one, it's almost impossible to go by the cityscape ordinances. You can't. You end up, because you're not really along the street, so you can't intermesh with the, you can't be pedestrian-friendly. It's impossible. But what you end up doing is building a big square box with a sea of pavement in front of it. It's like big box residential construction. That's what you're stuck with. And that's what's going on. That, that's what's happening if you do this. So there really is a problem with some of the lot. Now, maybe, like I said, maybe others, you know, that are actually on the street, that have ninety-five-foot frontage instead of a hundred-foot frontage. Maybe you would treat those differently. This bylaw, this ordinance doesn't treat them differently. It's just, it's everything to the developer that they want. And I understand, you know, people are saying, we're trying to make many of these lots, um, so that we can get more affordable houses downtown. Well, all the projects that I've seen, the ones that people talk to me about, are all downtown. And they're not going to be diminished in value because they're only non-conforming lots. And they're walkable downtown. So the developers are going to make a huge amount of money on this. Because these lots are still going to go for premium, I mean, excuse me, the apartments or the, um, or the condominiums will still go for a premium price. They don't care that they're on a non-conforming lot. If you let them build, it's going to ruin the neighborhoods, but it's not going to diminish the values of, of these apartments or condominiums. People are going to pay premium prices for it. I think those are the main things I wanted to say. But again, I, I don't think you have to rush into this. Um, I've spoken with Alan about this, I've spoken with the developer's attorney. Uh, I told him I was going to fight this. And like I said, um, if you want to do this, you're doing something extremely different from everybody. And maybe you can at least have Alan Seewell see if he agrees or. Um, there are some towns, uh, of the list I gave you, there are two that do allow this. There are two that allow a property owner to come in, to switch a use and to, to modify. But only if what they're building is a one or two family. There are two, two of the, two of the municipalities I gave you do allow that. Nobody allows someone to build a thirty or a fifteen-unit apartment building on a non-conforming lot. Nobody does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the materials.
All right.
So anyone else who'd like to speak about this amended ordinance? And again, we're not, we're not rehassing the Dewey Street Development, but we're talking about the ordinance.
Well, I just want to mention this ordinance change. I think you just, to me, all these ordinances were carefully thought out at one time when they were all drawn up. And I don't know how long ago that was, but it seems like they were very well thought out and they're put in place for a reason. It just seems as though you're taking away a lot of the reasons why they were put into place in the first place. There's a lot of great neighborhoods around Northampton. And this, as Carolyn stated earlier, there's a lot of pre-existing non-conforming lots in Northampton. It really is, is giving a carte blanche to a lot of developers. And a lot of those neighborhoods, people won't realize it, they don't know about all this wording and stuff, who would know? But they'll know when it comes to their neighborhood. And something happens in their neighborhood and it will be too late if this ordinance goes through as it stays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Barnesworth, Lobenstein, eighteen Dewey Court, which is owned by Joe Blotnick and Jill Higgins. Joe Blotnick and Jill.
Sorry, your name again, I'm sorry.
I should slow down. Barnesworth, Lobenstein, two last names. So eighteen Dewey Court is owned by Joe Blotnick and Jill Higgins. And they moved, but they lived here at the time that the original ordinance was passed about creating more developments around town. And they're very clear that the public message that was given at that time was, this will enable people to add an apartment on their land, or this will enable people to build another house on their property. There was nothing about creating space for developers to create non-conforming, using non-conforming lots as, and this is not the only one. There've already been several others where people have protested this development. So either that was true back then, or that was a public disinformation campaign. Everybody got enthusiastic about it, but perhaps the original intention was otherwise. Do you know the answer to that?
No, no, I, I think it speculates in about, you know. All right, anyone else on the ordinance?
Is there some reason that the city solicitor, has the city solicitor reviewed this and made comments?
Yeah. Yeah, so the city solicitor's reviewed it, and I mean, there've been many occasions where we found problems with the zoning. This section of zoning, we, the city has amended over time, not this particular subsection, but, you know, this dates back to the seventies, so there hasn't, and the city has never really done a wholesale, complete rewrite of the ordinance. As you know, since two thousand and seven, there've been, um, changes, even before two thousand and seven, there were changes incrementally. So, um, it's definitely consistent with the way the ordinance amendments happen in Northampton. There, I don't doubt that in other cities, there's definitely a proclivity to only allow and support modifications when it results in a single-family home or a two-family. You know, that's definitely a low-density model. The city, this is not an ordinance that, um, gives carte blanche to developers because there are other permit requirements that are necessary. So a site plan review for six units is very rigorous. And, um, the ordinance was set up to make sure that it's very specific about site plan reviews. A lot of communities don't have the specific requirements that the city has when you're coming for a site plan review in Northampton. I think, uh, the other piece is there are, um, legal pre-existing non-conformities that, um, relate more than, than just not frontage. We also have districts in the city that don't require any frontage at all. And, um, those are, um, commercial districts, the planned village, um, central business district. So there are other zoning elements that are consistent with looking at different ways of how, um, lots are used and, and developed. So it's not just about trying to get at, um, lots that don't have frontage or that might not have depth. So, a, and, and it's, it's really, um, I think the thing about Northampton zoning is that over time, every time, as you mentioned, George, that there's, that something that's high, that's high level, that's a problem, you know, we try to address it. So that's really what, what, um, what this is about. And it's not about saying that legal pre-existing non-conforming lots are bad. They're just, don't conform to the zoning that was created after those lots were already built.
No, the, as I read the proposed change, it's, it still would have to conform to densi, current densi.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Current density requirements.
Right.
Current density.
Current density requirement.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
In the case of Dewey Court, which is not before us now, obviously. But, um, whatever the den, whatever the density requirement is for that size lot is all that they could build.
Right, just like, you know, if you had a lot that conformed, you couldn't do more than what the zoning said.
So the question isn't conforming or non-conforming, that's all, that's, that's baked into the.
Right.
Into the recipe, as, as it were.
Right. Um, the other piece is, you know, you couldn't, under this provision as it stands, you couldn't even add an accessory dwelling unit because that triggers more parking in most districts. So where, on the one hand, we've tried to encourage, um, uh, and allow even accessory dwelling units. And this basically would say, and in particular, the whole reason we have accessory dwelling units allowed in a, as part of any single-family home was knowing that there are some lots that didn't meet the two-family lot size requirement, but it would allow them to do an accessory dwelling. But yet, it triggers a requirement from one additional parking space. So, um, under that, at this provision, as it stands, we really shouldn't have been approving all of those accessory dwelling units, um, throughout the city.
Have you heard some of the things that you said?
Let us just have a little bit more before you come back. So then, part, part also of the, uh, the impact of this ordinance change is to alleviate some of the work on the part of developers or applicants to go in front of the zoning board for findings. It all, it makes it a little more, uh, flexible.
I wouldn't say it's, I mean, it's sort of a streamlined, however, there's still a requirement that's actually more rigorous. And a zoning board finding is the lowest threshold, the easiest permit to get. You don't have to really show much at all.
Whereas.
Where a site plan is much higher, much harder to meet all the standards that are very specific. The planning board also deals with the, the issues related to site plan all the time and is set up to do that, whereas the zoning board isn't. Um, and the zoning board often defers, particularly when there are multiple permits required, defers to the planning board for those areas of expertise that, that, that they don't have. So, yes, it would, um, in one instance, it, um, eliminates one of potentially multiple permit paths. But only in the sense that it, um, is duplicative and it would overlap some of the same issues that would be discussed. There are other elements within nine point three that allow for by right, as of right, just forge on without going to the zoning board anyway. So it's not inconsistent with the way the rest of the, that subsection, nine point three, is written.
I, I just want to, I was able to say that it's just, to, I mean, your, the comment that you made when Charles mentioned something, if they will, is to allow developers to, I don't, I don't see like that. Allows whatever the modifications, not, not to benefit the developers themselves. I think, because the way you, you mentioned with her, I, I thought that was not how I see it. It's not about the developers.
Right.
It's about the land use and about the city as a whole. It's not, right? That's just something I think is not appropriate, I think. I mean.
And, and I think overall, to, to sort of, um, continue in that vein, taking a step back and sort of looking at the bigger picture. The city, um, has consistently for years and years, um, set, you know, set its goals based on the overall land use plan. So we have a map and we have, um, plans, we've done community, um, forums to develop a plan for, um, what we want or how we want our community to be, where we think we should direct development. We want to be a sustainable place, we want to make sure we have housing for people across all boards. We want to make sure that we have, um, connectivity between neighborhoods. And, um, and then we want to make sure we look at equity and issues of, um, you know, we, we want to encourage development where it makes sense. And a piece of that is looking at the codes and making sure that we're not throwing up barriers to accomplishing that comprehensive plan. And, and, um, that was one of the big elements in two thousand and seven when we adopted the plan was not just what do we want to do and where do we want to encourage it, but what are the impediments to that? So we've done, we spent years and years of looking at what makes sense for special permit, what makes sense for site plan. And a lot of it is, um, the permitting. You know, we want to make sure we get good projects and good development. But it also, it has to be clearly stated and understood from all perspectives about sort of what that process is.
Please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been rapidly taking notes, my handwriting is terrible, but I'm going to try to address some of these things. First off, uh, the city attorney, when you have him review the statute, he's not saying the wisdom of the statute, you know? Um, he's not saying that, well, this is great, you can go ahead and do it. What he's, what is the principal, uh, job would be to say, is it legal to write a statute like this? And indeed, it may be legal to write a statute like this, because generally, towns can be very, very generous. Um, if they want to be extremely generous to the developers, they, they can. So when he says you can do this, Alan's not saying this is wise or everybody does this, and indeed, nobody does this. But, you know, that's, all you're getting with Alan is that it's maybe legal to do this, not that there's any wisdom to do it. And you talk about saying, well, if we eliminate the finding, we still have site plan review, okay? And that's true, you know, for many of these projects up, up to six, you would at least have site plan review. But generally with site plan review, you can't say, no, we're not going to let you develop this project. We want our providing, or we want, you want this kind of driveway, we want underground utilities, we want. But you can't normally say, no. You're gonna, you know, if, if you say no, you're going to lose on appeal in a land court. You can't just say no to the site plan review, we're not gonna, you, you can tell them how you want it to be done, essentially, with the site plan review, which is very different than a finding. With a finding, um, the, the zoning board can clearly say no. They, you know, they can. I've been in cases where the zoning board has said no. But my mom friend has lost findings. And she says, they, they happen all the time, they don't, they're not a given. I've got a case now, I've got a case in a land court right now, where my client lost a finding to do a development. And that was to take a single-family house and make it bigger on a non-conforming lot. So, I mean, you, when you get rid of the finding, you're getting rid of an important thing that you've had for decades and that everybody has. But if Northampton, you know, does this, I would hope the press realizes this, I would hope the citizens realize this. What they're doing, they're becoming an aberration, if that's what they want to do, people should know it. And I just hope the people understand that. That's why, I don't think you should vote today, I, I mean, maybe you can vote today, but, um, I think you should talk to the, to Alan and maybe, uh, more people will realize what's going on here. And you talk about elements where, well, there's little things we could allow, that's fine. And write a statute, write an ordinance that does allow for accessory apartments, that does allow for, for parking for accessory apartments. Instead of saying, no, if you want to build a thirty-unit apartment building, you can do that. Instead of saying, no, if you want to build a thirty-unit apartment building, you can do that as of right now, okay? It's very different, you don't, you've gone from
Yes, apartment, right.
You still need a special permit, right, but you couldn't, but what I'm saying is that, you know, you're going from a very protective ordinance that said, don't make it more intensive, and you need a finding, to come in here and build it. I mean, that's what you're doing, okay? And you don't have to do that. You could write the statute like you like, you don't just write the developer's version of this statute. And you talk about density. Those, some of those towns are Amherst, Holyoke, Springfield, we're not talking rural communities here. So, I mean, you're differentiating yourself from some very fairly dense places for where there is a lot of development in downtowns.
Well, to be fair, I don't think all of those locations have nailed density planning. In a way that we would want to emulate.
There's some, there's some biggest disasters around, I mean, those places. It's impossible to fill housing in those places. I mean, you're making great arguments for this. I mean, in my view, everything you're saying is outlining exactly why we should make this change.
Because you just want to let people go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With, yes, basically.
But that doesn't
I mean, I think we heard it earlier, when they made these laws, they knew what they were doing. They were trying to say, these neighborhoods are for these people and not for these people.
Yeah.
And we're trying to change that.
Well, the, but that's the other thing I'm getting to. We're talking, many of these are gonna be in the downtown area. I mean, so it's not like these are gonna become affordable houses, these are gonna be some of the most expensive. But I believe the units at Dewey Court, for a four-bedroom, you're talking near four thousand dollars a month.
What relevance does that have?
It, well, they're trying to make it so that we have more affordable housing in the downtown area, this isn't the way to do it.
No, not necessarily. We have affordable housing in other areas of town, we have a lot of affordable housing in the center. This is just to provide more housing in the center of town where young people can do, singles can do it, people don't need cars, people can walk to the center. It provides that livability.
And presumably, the person who buys that expensive unit in downtown is moving out of the unit somewhere else in town. And it's increasing the amount of housing in town.
Well, yes, but here's the other thing, you say that we needed this a long time ago. What about two thousand and seven? In two thousand and seven, we talked about, you wanted pedestrian friendly, city streetscape development. If you allow this, many of these lots won't be able to comply with any of those. They'll come in here for waiver, 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 waiver. And that wasn't that long ago, and there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of public input, there was a lot of press, and that's what people wanted. And you're basically saying goodbye to that, because you can't have both.
No, I disagree. Those are permit issues anyway, not
You don't work through that and the discussion of any kind of application, you know, to provide that kind of, those kind of amenities that are, you know, part of the vision.
But like Dewey Court, he, the developer basically said, I can't abide by the city state provisions, I'd rather street state provisions.
Yeah, he agreed that, but he also did like voluntarily, as I recall, built in to make, continue to make accessible a public way that, or, I mean, it was on private property, there was a pedestrian path, I mean, I don't wanna get into discussion of that, but
I don't know why he did that, make Smith May one did that.
I'm just saying that like, that's the part of the, let's stay away from Dewey Court in general, I don't want to talk about that. But but my point is, is that through the 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 process here, we can, we can deal with those things and keep the overall objectives. I disagree that just because something is non-conforming in a way that means that we have to work through building in these goals, means that we can't do it.
What I'm saying is, if something is non-conforming, what you've done in the past is the zoning board has to make a decision on that. Okay, when you especially go from a single-family house or a two-family house to a fifteen-unit apartment building. The zoning board would have to address that, to take into account, other than just build, 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 developer, developer, to take into account the neighborhood. And they would have an input on that. And and they could say, no, this isn't the right project for this neighborhood, that's what the zoning board can say. When you have site plan review, that's not really a good option, you just say, well, build it this way, build it that way, it's still gonna happen. That's the difference. Site plan review and findings don't equate to each other, it's been done for decades and decades and decades, all the other people do it. So just so you realize, you're making very, very different, if you vote to recommend this, as it is, without trying to craft a better version of this, you're just doing something that's kind of an aberration to wear to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. McGlocken.
Okay.
You know, and I think Northampton prides itself sometimes in being a leader in some, not an aberration, but leading the region in some aspects of planning of that may not be reflected in Holyoke or Springfield, so.
Or Amherst.
Or Amherst, for sure, yeah, so whether it's an aberration or not, it's a little church.
Definitely Amherst.
Please, all of your, your comments. Because unfortunately, a topic like this, even though it's promoted in the public record and the press and it's announced, we don't draw a lot of citizens to come and talk about a zoning amendment like this. Appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, boy.
So, let's move on. You ready to, oh, sure, please.
Anne Marie, how do you, so, just, I hear a lot of the talk that you guys are doing about developments and things coming in, and living here and growing up here and being around my life, I really feel for the people who live here too. So I just hope that you take that into consideration, that it is, and we're, you know, there's development, we see it always. We don't, nobody's against development as part of this group of Dewey Court neighbors. Everybody understands that's what our city is, and that's what is great about our city, it's how much we change and how much we do and grow around here, but it's also about people who live here currently and, you know, what some of these changes will do to them and their neighborhood and their quality of life. And what, you know, they can play out on the street with their kids or their family, and then maybe something large comes in and they can't anymore, or there's a lot of changes. Not that there shouldn't be changes, but I think that you should really take into consideration the people who live here and why they live here, maybe why they picked the house or the street that they live on because they, you know, of what it looks like and what it feels like to them. And some of these changes that, we don't even know where, you know, some of these thoughts that this could happen or things around town could really change their lives significantly and, you know, so I just hope that you guys can fall back to.
Thank you. Any other points anyone wants to raise at this time?
Just something, you're not talking about Dewey Court, right, the development there.
Right.
Just make clear, you're not talking about that, so it's not based on that.
Right.
As I say.
There's no other than application, right?
No, to the extent I'm interested, I'm not.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's
Right, this is a legislative action, not a permit.
Yeah, I understand, but I just want to make clear that
Right.
Whatever they're filming, whatever they're doing there.
Yeah, I think raising the issue, you know, sort of trying to put it in the context of what a project might look like makes sense. I think there are lots of projects you could probably think about that aren't the one that just brought this to light. I think, again, I mean, I think this was stated and discussed, and I think it makes sense to understand what Anne Marie just said is, you know, the board is charged with looking at how projects affect neighborhoods. So this ordinance doesn't eliminate that. It eliminates potentially one layered, it eliminates one of the layers that might be required for review and puts it more in the jurisdiction of a board that addresses those things about neighborhood impacts. Which actually, the board has to address whether the lot currently conforms or is non-conforming. So if a conforming lot came forward in front of you, you'd be looking at the very same issues as whether the lot had some element that didn't comply, you know, you'd be looking at the lens, through the same lens at both those projects. So this certainly is not intended to take away that review by the board.
So the question would be, does the non-conformance impact, you know, something, and we can do it here as opposed to the Dewey Court, doing it and then us doing it again, right, essentially, right?
Exactly, and again, this language is very specific to say, it's not creating any new non-conformity. As you said before, whatever the way it was, if that's not changing, you're looking at the whole picture and making sure that every other aspect that's changing isn't compliant.
I mean, so for a property owner, and I'd like to get away from demonizing all developers, but a property owner, like, it's just like a draw is whether or not they own a conforming lot or a non-conforming lot and for the same, exact same project on basically the same
Right, what they
One has to go to the zoning board, one doesn't.
Right, exactly.
Right, I, I don't, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. That doesn't add a layer of something to, that I necessarily feel is productive.
And I don't think that if this was to be passed in sixty days by the city council, it's gonna open up this floodgate of applications for site plan review and special situations that we weren't seeing in the past. Because they still have to meet, the applicant, the homeowner, the developer still has to meet any number of other requirements.
Yes.
Right, so in in many of the cases, you know, the project would have been going to both boards and has in the past gone to both boards. And so it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't change, the only thing it changes is just directing it one path.
Can you make a motion?
To close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Sure. Motion to make to close public hearings are second. And just discussing, you feel comfortable that we've given enough time for the citizens of Northampton who are interested in this change to come forward?
Well, don't forget, there's another public hearing too, city council will be holding a public hearing.
Okay, so they have other chances to, what's that, take a bite at this apple?
Well, and it then also goes to the full city council after that, so it's not, this isn't the end of the process, it's really just
We're not approving it, we're just
We're just
We're doing our part.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, motion to recommend.
Motion to close the public hearing?
We already
No, I know, so, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
We did that.
No, we didn't, it was moved and seconded, then we discussed it for a minute, now we're voting on it, so. All right.
We already seconded it, which was a lot like a
Yeah. That's unanimous, thank you.
We unanimously seconded it.
And approved, without any dissenting opponents, all right. And is there a motion?
Motion to to recommend the proposed zoning amendment thirty-five zero dash nine point three B one and two to allow modifications to non-conforming lots when change needs all the zoning requirements except for the existing non-conformities.
Thank you. Third, second.
Second.
And the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, yes. Thank you for your time tonight and your discussion, and yes, please, as Carolyn mentioned, there's other places still to to have your voice heard on this.
You know, so.
I'm telling the other folks, yeah, for the record.
All right, so for this board, our business is almost done unless there's, don't we have this A and R?
I think the only A and R actually is actually relates to the five lot that you all just approved earlier at the
Golf course?
Golf course. I didn't mention it during that hearing, but we don't have the final plans. We had the draft plans, but they said they were, they were gonna make some note about the zoning table, so the final, that, basically, the A, they've submitted plans for the A and R that would divide and create those five lots. It won't, I can't sign it until the end of the appeal hearing for the permit. But by approving the A and R now, then I can just endure, I can sign it when they're ready and it doesn't have to come back to the board.
So you're asking us to approve the A and R for the five lots?
Yeah, that you just approved.
At the golf course.
Yeah.
But there's no paperwork or anything, but usually that's just
We saw it on the screen.
That's just the
We did the screen work.
Yes. Is there a motion?
I can pull it up.
A motion to approve the A and R for the five lots?
I moved it, approved the A and R for the five lots.
Second.
Yeah.
Discussing, all in favor?
Yeah.
You Adams?
Yeah.
Ken?
You're good.
No, no, every once in a while, we have to have it, yeah.
Wow, it's been a while, huh?
The other thing is, is that in our next meeting, Carolyn, I think you said it was fairly
We don't have any permits January twenty-third, but I do want to have, bring the discussion about the where we are on the form-based code for the two-family units. And actually, that would be another thing that would be an issue because the two-family would also trigger the requirement for parking and other stuff, that's the problem with this. So, two-family, and I probably should mention that in the public hearing. So I want to have a discussion about the draft, so I'll email that to you. Basically, there are a couple of issues that we want to make sure, that we want to check in with you to see how the board feels about certain either including design elements or characteristics or not. And then we'll have, ask the consultant to finish the draft, the work, so that we can move it forward. So I want to spend a good amount of time with that.
Send that draft along.
No, I'll send it prior to January twenty-third.
So you mean, you'll send the draft?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 sorry.
We're not gonna see it at the
No, 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 I'll send it before.
Great.
And then the other, so then I was thinking, the other thing is, we could talk about board configuration, given that we have new members and we don't have our chair and vice chair.
You need a chair.
Nope.
So we need to have formal votes, but it probably makes sense to have more people for that.
There are really some good kind of committees that members of the board can join to double your volunteer work in the city. So I think, Carolyn, if you could send us a list of those things too, that people can nominate themselves for, I think would be great.
Maybe these committees
Yes, so.
Of the planning board or
Of other city boards that we represent.
That we have to send a representative
Oh, you're still doing CPC, right?
Right, but that period could end, someone else could do that, you know? There's other ones that I can't even think off the top of my head, housing partnership, I think we used to send somebody to, I don't know if we do anymore.
We don't, and that's all changed, we can have a conversation about that because now we're staffing housing partnership internally in our office now, so Will we stop? Oh, who's staffing it? The yet-to-be-hired person.
So, would a motion to adjourn with the Oh.
Yes, I mean Yeah, that makes sense, I just wanted to give the thought, you've
Please come to the January twenty-third meeting.
Okay.
Sounds great.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Let's move to adjourn.
So move. Oh, thanks, Carolyn.
Right.
How about now?